Alright, it is six thirty. I'm gonna call this study session Littleton City Council to order on April eleventh. We've got all of councils present except for council member Driscoll. Did you hear from him?
No, he was gonna be gone. I don't remember if this was the week.
This was the week. I thought it was the eighteenth. Anyways, we've got four items on the agenda tonight. First up is the Main Street Tree Removal of Diseased Trees. We'll have discussion on fund balance, reserve policy, presentation and discussion on the arts. Funding arts, culture, tourism with Robin from Lodger's Tax, and finally discussion of Senate Bill two thirteen. So, first up, we've got the discussion, presentation. I'm not sure there's much that you're looking back at council for, but we'll talk about trees. So, city manager?
Thanks Mayor. And this is an item that I know council has been briefed on in writing, but we wanted to make sure that we had a study session so that you could hear, really have the full picture and hear kind of all aspects of it from our staff who has been working on this and also ask any questions that you might have because we know that this project, while necessary, it has a major impact on our downtown and just a lot of the experience that folks have with downtown Littleton. So, with that, I'm not gonna brief any of the content. I will turn over to our Public Works Utilities Director Keith Reister. Also joined by Keith are Kelsey Stansfield, Manager of Browns Open Space and Natural Resources, and also Mary Dance for our City Forester. So with that, turn over to Keith.
Well, thanks. We're here to give you all briefing and show you pictures tonight and kind of explain the situation and how it fits into sort of a long-term game plan for downtown. So, I'm gonna kind of get things kicked off and I'm gonna leave the scientific work to Mary on this particular presentation. So, basically what we want to cover tonight is the background of the situation, why we're here, why we're taking the steps that we're taking, and then also how this will fit into the longer game plan for downtown as it relates to future planning for things like streetscape and other projects going on there. So, that's the path we're gonna take tonight, so.
It's my turn to talk about canker. Keith told me not to get too much in the weeds because I can talk tree biology all day. In short, the majority of the trees on Main Street are honey locust trees and they have Thynectria canker, which is a really common disease that is in honey locust trees. Once it starts, it spreads wind and water and that sort of thing, and since we have so many planted so close together, the spread happened quickly. That being said, it has been a few years of it and we don't have an opportunity to do treatment because the disease has gone into the stems and the treatment option is chemical and then cutting away the infected branches. So, since the infected branches are down to the stem of the tree, this is pretty much the only alternative we have to ensure safety. I've been here a year and a half and we've lost a decent amount of large-sized branches, which is really common. So, it starts at the tips and then you start seeing pretty aggressive dieback and once you see it, it starts happening very quickly. So, that's the severity of the cause, I think, albeit sad. I love trees, I would argue more than anyone else in this room and my job is now removing a lot of trees on Main Street, which is the niche that I'm in. So, that part is sad. But we did, we did have a third-party consulting arborist come out and do a risk assessment and analyze all of the trees and it did confirm our suspicion. So, they followed a six-step method and it comes up, it quantifies a number, which more or less we're saying is quantifying risk. And in doing so, we were able to see that Main Street is our most hazardous street that we have in the city as far as our urban canopy goes. So, that's the severity of it and that's kind of a brief background of the disease. I'm happy to talk more about it and signs and symptoms for it, but I don't think it's that necessary because you can walk down Main Street and probably see it for yourself. Yeah, on this is an example of one of the trees that we did. So, there's those six condition categories that we're surveying, giving them a value, and then creating an overall condition index from that. So, that is the way that we were able to put a number to quantify, more or less quantify, risk that we have on all of our trees and then taking that as an average sum or comparing our major thoroughfares.
So, Mary, that's done for each tree?
Each tree, yes.
And that wasn't done lightly for?
No. It was, each tree is getting via, the qualification is Tree Risk Assessment Qualified Arborist. So, each tree is getting a thorough analysis from a certified qualified arborist that's looking specifically at each tree and then my job was receiving the data and looking at our general arborist canopy.
And this was done for every tree in the city that we maintain, not just on Main Street? We really wanted to get a full understanding of the canopy throughout the city that we maintain and are responsible for.
As a quick commercial, Keith and his team will be back in a month or two with more of a complete, more of a comprehensive overview of that tree survey. I think some of the results are really interesting and you'll have that. So, there's been a whole lot of work on assessing our canopy over the past year. Back to you, Mary.
That should be a half-year presentation.
That one is positive news.
Very positive.
Because we love our trees. I think, is there another slide on? Oh, yeah. Here's a good picture example. So, that ranking that we did from the last tree that was the six condition categories, this is the tree. So, seeing those numbers and its overall ranking and then this is on Main Street only. The OCI is, what I was saying, is the overall condition index that we're using as our quantifier. The highest on Main Street is an eighty-three. That is a very small newly-planted oak tree. It's smaller than my arms, so it obviously has zero risk because of its smallest, or how its size for it. And then the lowest is forty-three. The lowest possible OCI is thirty-four. So, that's just kind of remarkable that it's still standing, honestly, at that part. And then the average OCI on Main Street is sixty, which is lower than any of our other major thoroughfares by about ten points.
I want to highlight on this picture that one commonality in this picture of several others is the canopy is actually held together by the holiday lights. They're out there all year. I mean, in all honesty, that's true for a lot of the trees, so.
Is it, is it, the concern is like the actual tree like just fallen over? Like, if it's getting eaten from the inside out?
It's, it's starting top-down. So, I think the biggest concern right now would be branches from the canopy. But since we see the disease in the stem and, yeah, if you're walking the trees and kind of looking around, you'll see some of them that they're missing half of the trunk. And you can see the boring insect marks and that kind of thing. So, though those are far, those are fewer between, there's a handful of ones that I at least think about in my personal time of the risk of like stem failure.
I did kick one as a joke once, a smaller one, and it did crack, so.
Sure it'll have superhuman strength.
I really don't.
This is when we take the turn.
Yeah, we do have a lot of instances over the last few years where we've been fortunate that as trees have shed on the canopy, onto the sidewalk or on the street, that they haven't landed on people or cars. We do, I mean, just a few weeks ago, we had one that was branched this big around, it just shed right into the parking lane, frankly. So, you know, it's a regular occurrence for us down there.
And regular enough that we're pulling them off of lights, so they're falling and being held up by the lights.
Safety net.
Actually, through some of the communication we've received from property owners, and I actually wasn't aware of this, but one of the property owners I talked to who owns the majority of one of the blocks says that he spends multiple mornings out of the week picking branches up off the ground in front of his businesses, so.
So, we'll jump into the process.
Yeah, so we, as far as timeline, we have been meeting with contractors already. We've identified a couple that we really like the proposals of. As soon as we get them under contract, we are, they're telling us four to eight weeks for scheduling. So, assuming we got somebody under contract, you know, by the end of April, we're looking at earliest being June probably for removals. Once removals begin, they're estimating three weeks, three to four weeks. We are looking at putting some sort of clause in the contract that really binds them to a timeframe with a penalty if they go outside of it because we know that the work is very sensitive and we want them to wrap up very quickly and get out of there. At that point, I actually don't have up here, I realize, but we will be filling in all the tree pits with concrete, so we're not leaving that gravel behind. That's been one of the biggest questions we've actually received through public outreach.
My ankles, thank you. That's gonna be my first question.
Yes, and so at that point, either the work would be complete or we would move forward with the idea of doing carving fifteen, fourteen of them into sculptures. That was an idea that was thrown out as just a creative solution to add some sort of visual interest in the short term. That is being met with either like aggressive positive or aggressive negative. So, I think a public survey would hold a lot of value in deciding if we go that route. I think the biggest concern from the negative is everyone's expecting those gas station bears. But you do have some handouts here which actually show an assortment of artists' work in Colorado just to show you the full scope of what they're capable of. So, should the city want to pursue that, some public outreach would take place and then we would establish a timeline.
So, the stumps are left and you carve them?
Yeah, so you'd cut them at about five, six feet tall?
Like ten feet is what they say.
Okay, oh wow, okay.
I found that out last week. There's a whole art of it that I didn't know about.
Yeah, and so that would really reduce the risk because you're not dealing with overhead, but then leave enough to carve into some crazy sculpture.
Pretty cool. I think it's cool.
So, and when we do the removals, one of the things that we really focused on in talking to contractors is the safety aspect so that as they're working on an individual tree, it's gonna be contained, we won't have pedestrians there. We'll make sure traffic's even so it's as safe as possible. Excuse me, I choked up over trees. I mean, I thought Mary would do that. It would really be an opportunity for us to, you know, the cool part about it is, yeah, we'll be safe, we'll have all that, but it's also an opportunity for people to come down and, you know, see this going on. And then if we move towards the sculpture section, that's gonna be a whole nother opportunity to potentially engage people and watch the artists' work and those kind of things too. So, there's some, you know, some really interesting opportunities to bring people downtown as a result of that.
And there is some information in your packets that talk about what other cities are doing in regards, excuse me. No, I'm getting choked up. About carving events that they hold, so apparently it's not a new concept.
So, since there's negative and positive feelings about this, are you gonna do a survey and majority wins or what are you gonna do?
That would be our recommendation, although I mean if it's, if we're somewhere where it's like sixty, forty, I don't know if it's worth going down, so.
We also need, if we do that, we need a better idea. So, I think it's a pretty good, I mean, it's a good idea. We're pursuing it. I think we'll find some ways to gauge interest as we go. But there's a lot to save, I think, in favor of that kind of, of something kind of unique and innovative there. And they won't all be bears for one.
No bears allowed.
Yeah, we can do one of each of you, maybe I. There would be a.
It's in Culture Commission, where's our money? They're giving us the thumbs up over there.
What about like something from, running from north to south, from building from the north to the south side of the street? Just for shade?
Oh, from the buildings, are you saying now?
Yeah, a pie, you know.
So.
I know the guy who used to do the canyons has since passed away, but maybe we could do something a little smaller.
So, one of the challenges we have, which also goes to the discussion about the holidays later on, is we actually don't have a lot of infrastructure down there to hold things up. And we actually are in a position where we really can't be hanging things on the building fronts because they're historic façades. So, we have this issue, and this goes into the late discussion too about, you know, when, for example, people talk about Lammers Square with span wires, because we've been talking about changing this for a few years now. And the problem is there's nothing to hang it on and we have to make, you know, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure investment just to hang those, because that's not available. So, that's part of what we're working through as well is, you know, and Kelly can speak to that about the communications and then how we're looking at sort of the winter season and that kind of thing.
Sure, we actually had a conference call yesterday with a firm and then another one today. These are out-of-state firms, but we're talking about, is there an opportunity to try to do something with the candlelight walk? We will still do the candlelight walk as we always have with sort of the parade with, you know, culminating with Santa at the end and we'll have all the dancing Christmas trees and candy canes and all that stuff. But, you know, obviously the lights will not be on the trees because there won't be any trees. So, what we've talked about with some of these firms is, is there an opportunity, especially as those grates are filled in with concrete and the trees are gone, you know, is there an opportunity that we could place some kind of a lighted holiday kind of a structure, maybe on several corners on Main Street? But, you know, it's gonna be quite costly and in addition, you know, there's some staffing impacts. The firm we talked to today, I was pretty optimistic about. Their pricing seems more reasonable than the firm we talked to yesterday. And I think we could do some really cool things down there, but, you know, this is a little unexpected and so there's not a budget for it. So, we'll have that conversation with you at some point down the road.
With, as the trees come down, the businesses, I'm assuming all the businesses on Main Street are aware of what's happening?
Yeah.
They're probably gonna get bombarded with, you know, why is the city doing this? They're taking all the trees down, so they're gonna have to.
That's a good segue to Kelly's slide.
Well, we produced this little brochure and it was taken door-to-door to each of the businesses in the downtown area. And we had a story in the April issue of the Littleton Report, which came out a little bit before April first because we have a new vendor and they're really fast, which is kind of awesome. And then we've done some other things, you know, we've got some information on our website. We put out a story in the Littleton Report online. This flyer is available at the library, at the museum. Oh, if you haven't seen it yet, have a copy. And we can always provide you with more of those if you feel the need to share them. I know some of you have your district meetings. If you want additional copies that you can hand out at your meetings, we'd be happy to provide that. We've done social media posts and we're going to do a video with Mary and Tyler, the magnificent, going downtown. And we were waiting for the weather to improve and apparently it has improved in the last forty-eight hours. So, they're gonna go downtown and shoot a video and she's gonna be able to explain, you know, this is what you're seeing and this is why this is happening and this is why the trees have to come down. And then, you know, we'll try to add some additional information about the downtown mobility and street improvement program that'll be coming up in a couple of years. So, people will know that, you know, we have a solution, but it's gonna be a couple of years down the road.
To tie into that, so we've been also, the other part of this group here is Cindy, Perry in Economic Development. And, you know, she's already been on the ground with Mary and Kelsey at some downtown meetings already, getting out there and talking to people and getting a discussion going on that. And so, we're kind of reaching all of those angles. This is one of those things too, though, where, you know, and Kelly knows this better than anyone. The phone calls, there'll be a rash of phone calls and outreach when the first tree starts to get cut, is usually what happens. But, you know, we've taken a few calls up to this point. If you would like to characterize them, you're welcome to.
Yeah, we've received slightly under twenty calls thus far. Most came right after the Littleton Report went out. I would say half of those started out just asking questions. The huge one being, are you filling in the tree pits afterwards? The other half were pretty unhappy in the beginning, though after we talked with them a little bit and actually explained the process and why we're doing this and how we got into the situation, I'd say ninety-five percent are understanding. Either somewhere between supporting and just understanding but disappointed.
And I know that Kathleen has spoke to the business chamber and the DDA about it. And I don't want to speak for Kathleen, but I don't think that she received a whole lot of. People seem to understand. Just nod yes. People seem to understand that it's a problem and we're trying to address it.
Is this canker, like can it, I know you, I think it's something communication, it can spread via wind or whatever onto other trees? Does that include bushes?
No, it only affects honey locust trees.
Only honey locusts, okay.
So, there's a few, I mean, there's a few others, but not anything that's common. And it spreads namely by contact. So, it's like if there's some type of a limb break or a damage from a car or person messing with the tree, which vandalism is real on Main Street. So, if there's like that direct contact with it, that's how it spreads. But the concern is not it spreading outside of Main Street to neighboring trees that are, you know, on city property or that kind of thing.
And you did trees throughout the city, you said? How are the elms, aren't the elms ones we're concerned about?
Elms are hard. Dutch elm disease has kind of come and gone through, which I assume is probably the reference because that's a high buzz. It's kind of come and gone through Colorado, so the majority of the impact we've already absorbed and we don't have many American elms in our inventory as a consequence, but.
The good part about that is the work that's been going on over the last couple of years with Kelsey and Mary and the team is really driving towards a forestry master plan. What do we want our urban forests and our canopy to be going forward? That's why all of our trees were assessed as part of this process. And they've done some really unique stuff related to how our canopy is across the city, neighborhood by neighborhood, and tie that into demographic information and things like that. That's what we're gonna come to you with here in another month or so as well. So, that's all kind of working together to provide a space so that, you know, hopefully we're not in this position again. Just don't go take any of those trees and bring them into the plaza out here because those are honey locusts too.
Just, this may be micromanaging, but I'm sure you'll get enough calls about it when it starts, when that first tree comes down is putting mufflers on the chainsaws. Like, it's gonna be noisy, obviously. Are you gonna have altered work hours in order to accommodate missing some of the busy time? Take it, okay.
Certainly. I think that's been part of what we've asked for in the proposals has been kind of a cover letter as to how, it's obviously a unique job, how are we going to do it? And it's been really telling because some people are like, we prioritize safety and it's vague. And then other people are calling out certain businesses on certain blocks that are open for breakfast and so we're gonna hit those later, you know, working with it. So, I feel, I actually feel very encouraged in that response system. That being said, chippers are loud and there's no way to get a quieter one. So, I want to set healthy loud expectations, but I think that we can certainly confine it to now the trees are on the ground, we're gonna chip everything for ten minutes, you know, like those types of restrictions, we are certainly within our means of doing it.
We had talked about relocating some beavers on South.
Release them.
That's an eight-week job. You're gonna re-grease Mulch Mountain?
Well, we've already been through that at least once in the last two years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, noise and dust is gonna be the nuisance that you'll probably hear the most about. So, you know, as, when you're selecting contractors and keeping their top of them, those are the things I would say to keep in mind in some of those bid specs.
Minimal compared to a tree falling on you?
Yes.
It is.
It's all relative.
It's more for the sake of limiting public engagement around voice.
Well, let's pull the Band-Aid off, do it quick, and let's do something cool. This won't be the first time we've been through this change.
So, you know, it's interesting, actually, you know, over in our building at Geneva Lodge, we have a lot of historical pictures. And one of the most interesting things to me, interesting things to me about Littleton is almost all the historical downtown pictures, there's no trees in them.
Concrete pods?
We don't have any of those pictures hanging out. We don't have any of those. Yeah, the concrete pod episode. So, but if you look at a lot of our historical photos, which is not uncommon here in Colorado, you know, there's not a lot of trees on Main Streets and as time has gone on, you know, not just in downtowns but elsewhere, the shade canopy is important, that green space is important to people from, you know, living, economic development, neighborhoods. And so, that's why, you know, our effort beyond this related to the overall health of our forests here in the city is really important. So, that's what we're kind of working on in general, so.
Thanks, y'all.
Good luck.
Any other questions?
Nope, alright, thank you.
What is the last slide? You didn't show the last slide.
Oh, um.
Questions?
Oh.
Need more, but the next slide? The next slide.
So, yeah, the replanting.
We're gonna grow tall trees, Mary, that's what we need, big foot.
So, really, right now, we're not replanting just because we don't have great infrastructure to support long-term tree health. And this is just an image of a. Um, and this is just an image of a silver cell, which Mary can speak much better to. Um, but right, our existing condition is right now, we have four to eight square foot tree pits. We have uh non-functioning irrigation, very compact soil. Um, any tree we planted in there likely wouldn't survive uh without a major overhaul. Um, and so this is just an example where we.
There will be a major overhaul.
A major overhaul.
Yes, so we have a really great opportunity coming up to build the infrastructure to support.
This is, this is also one of those things too, and outside of just trees and is this also ties into, you know, your long-term plans as you go through that process of things like stormwater management. How do you capture that stormwater in a different way so that you don't have the, the pooling and things like that? And that's stuff that you can build into infrastructure today that just really greens things up in general, captures that water quality differently. That, that's something that'll be built into the streetscape program as we go forward as well.
Are there any train tracks still on Main Street underneath?
Well, maybe. My, my history as a public works person, there's been more than one occasion when we've been out milling a road in a city and it's all of a sudden there's teeth flying off the milling machine. Cause there's a piece of railroad track sitting there, so wouldn't be the first time that happened.
Cause there was a rails that went down.
There was a trolley track in there, so um we'll just have to wait and see. You know, that'll be part of the, part of our next uh significant work with Denver Water as we go down this path is a lot more of the detailed survey. Um, and we're gonna be able to tell some of that as we get into that, so.
You'll find that underground tunnel that they always talk about in the Halloween tours.
The catacombs of ex-council members.
After Denver Water comes through and does their thing, is the intention probably that the plan for downtown won't be trees?
I, I'm saying this because I would hope so. That's far beyond, far beyond my voice, but I'm giving thumbs up anyway I can.
I think we could assume through the public engagement process that nobody identified as, yeah.
And it is, the silver cell is one example of this like integrated soil management. That once you've done any level of removing things like concrete and asphalt, it's reasonably cheap to install. And then that does prevent us from getting in the situation that we're in now. We can have long-term trees that are growing in wide spaces like this more than a four by four tree pit. So it is, it is, we're making sure that we're not gonna repeat this issue in forty years when the trees are forty years old again. So that part is hoped.
Staff trade out seats here. Next item for business is the discussion of the fund balance and reserves policy. Hinted on this in the past, talking about the, the, the process of where our fund balance sits. And staff would come back and recommend some new policy and that's what we're here to talk about.
I am excited about, cause I, I've always talked about that, how we do more in that. Do you have a city manager?
This is your next Aberdeen Village Roads.
This is reserved, basically.
So I know uh the city last reconsidered its, its fund balance and reserve policy in twenty eighteen. And since then, you've had a pandemic and a moderate recession. Um, and you have a new city manager who has thoughts about such things and uh help own that. Um, and so Tiffany and I have just been talking about uh fund balance, just I think the overall makeup of the, the general fund of revenues and our, our financial base. Uh, comparing some of the, some of our thoughts about, about reserves to the government officer finance. Association GFOA guidelines for, for cities and for, for fund balance. And um I think the policy that you'll see tonight uh is intended to really um, you know, shift a little bit from the, the, the five-year target that we currently have to a kind of minimum target reserve that's throughout the five-year forecast. So that we know the uh, the reserves of the fund, how we're gonna u- use fund balance in the uh current year all the way through that, that fifth year of our forecast and gives a little room once we get more uncertain in that uh forecast. Um, and I think the other thing that um I think is helpful with, especially with our community is um clarifying what some of the risks are that we're mitigating against. Why, why do we have uh reserves? Why have we set them in, in the amount that we have? So I think that's what you're seeing tonight and I'll turn it over to our finance director Tiffany Hooton to give more of an overview. Take it away.
Good evening, council. Um, we're gonna talk about fund balance and reserves policy, which I know is an exciting topic for all of us. It truly is for me.
It's not procurement, but yeah.
It's not, it's not. Wait for that one.
Don't wanna go straight to pro, straight to proc- procurement.
Yeah, exactly. Um, I just wanna give you kind of a little history of where we are today and how we got where we are today. We have some reserve policy recommendations and we're probably gonna talk about some other options um other than just having a minimum of twenty-five percent and so wanna talk with all of you about that and then kinda what the next steps are. So going back to the era of about two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. The council at that time had requested that we have a fund balance policy of anything over eighteen percent. Uh, in any current year would be transferred to the capital projects fund. Because we were struggling with replacing capital projects and infrastructure. We knew we had a deficit there, we had a lot of needs. And so that was a policy that was made way back then. So we kinda held to that until about twenty seventeen, twenty-eight. When we really started seeing revenues change, um, we were having more revenues come in. We were kinda past a couple of recessions that we've been through, little more stability on sales tax. And so we wanted to change that in eighteen and twenty eighteen. And so we changed it to where we have our five-year plan and we wanted that fund balance to be eight to eighteen percent by that fifth year. So our range. And we've been uh following that since twenty eighteen. Um, it also includes a Tabor reserve. We're required by Colorado State statutes to hold at least three percent in case there's a, an emergency related or emergency has to find by Tabor. Uh, so we will always be required to maintain at least three percent.
Three percent part of the eight percent, part of the eighteen percent.
It is, correct, yes. So that kinda gets us where we are today. And, you know, just to kinda see what that looks like currently, uh, we have been seeing revenues come in uh quite strong the last couple of years after the pandemic. Um, and so we have uh current reserves that are significantly higher than we've seen in the past. If you look at twenty twenty-three, we projected we would be at forty-one percent. Um, and in that fifth year, we are projected to be at twenty-seven percent. So that just kinda gives you an idea of what we're looking at today. Um, so right now, our current fund balance is estimated at twenty-one point four in twenty twenty-three. So just kinda wanted to, to kinda show that picture. So some of the recommendations that we have.
Tiffany?
This is like super slow, yeah.
Um, I think another, well, do you have some of the um this uh sales tax reliance and that sort of thing?
Yeah, 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 we'll talk about that. Um, so we really wanted to talk about some risk areas for the city. Every city has risk and every city has different risks. And it just depends on what your makeup is, what your revenue reliance is. And so we're a little different than a lot of other cities, uh, but one of the things is revenue diversity risk. So the main source of revenue we have is sales and use tax, eighty-three percent of our total general fund. So we rely heavily on sales tax to service all of our community and all of our um constituents. Franchise fees are our second highest, but it's only at five percent. And so the reliance of sales tax is, is really big for us here in Littleton and we have to take that in consideration. You know, we've gone through recessions over the past few years. Um, it hasn't hit us as much as some other communities, um, but we're not immune to that. And so we wanna take that into account as well. Um, no one really wants to talk about natural disasters, but we've had them here and, you know, we just went through a pandemic. It was an international, global pandemic uh disaster. And so we can't dismiss that, you know, where we have close proximity to the river, we have the railroad. I've seen a couple of railroad derailments over the last few years, so it does happen. And so we need to also take that into consideration. Um, I kinda mentioned sales and use tax are, are revenue diversity, but uh, you know, key industries. Who is providing sales tax revenues to us? Who are the taxpayers that are collecting that? What industries are they in? Are they impacted by technology? Are they uh local home improvement stores? You know, what if one left? And so we have to be cognizant of that. And then where are they located in this, this city relative to, you know, downtown's close to the river? Downtown's close to the railroad. So again, just factors we have to consider. Um, and then the other one is uh not necessarily a risk, but something that we want to um provide for is economic opportunities. You know, there could be um something that comes up within the city that maybe we want to incentivize or help a business or um an industry come into Littleton. And so having some of this in reserves gives us that one-time opportunity to maybe address or help a, a business or industry come into Littleton.
One comment on the risks too, and just in, in my experience, when you do, say we lost a major sales tax generator. That would be very problematic for us. Right. If you lose, you know, a business that generates several, several million dollars a year. It's not just a one-year, one-time loss, you know, unless there's something planned to come back, which isn't always the case with those large sales tax generators. So when you look at how we are recommending we set the, the reserve, it's because the goal would be to transition our services down to the new revenue level without shock to our service levels of the community or the organization through, through layoffs. So when you see kinda the amounts, we're talking about, you know, very loosely, of course, no emergency is standard. But you might think about the loss happens and then you have, you wanna take two or three years to transition to a new revenue level lower. Um, so you're gonna need, you know, more than just one year of loss for that impact. And so um just that's one of the, one of the things we looked at also.
Yeah, um, Jim mentioned the GFOA organization and so they have a tool, it's a general fund reserve calculation worksheet that kinda gives you some guidance on assessing your risks and in, in your community and it's kind of on a, a grading scale. And so we went through the exercise of, you know, looking at revenue stability, um, extreme events that could happen, growth in the city, you know, were built out. Um, so there's probably not a lot of new growth coming to the city. And so all of these are factors that kinda go into that calculation and they kinda give you kind of like a grade, if you will. And um when we went through that exercise, you know, we're not far off from where we, we have been or where we're recommending now. And so they kinda put us in that category of seventeen to twenty-four percent um of, of reserve for a city based on some of the assessments that we um, or risks that we um talked about. Um, so we're right in that um seventeen percent um is equal to two months of operating expenditures. That's where that number comes from. That is a GFOA standard recommendation. Um, and really it just covers that two months. If something catastrophic happened, you'd have two months of cash or two months of reserves to address any issues immediately. Um, so that also was into um some of our um considerations. So what are we looking at right now? Um, we wanted to talk about some categories. You know, right now we just have one reserve. And so we have some percentages here, um, they're approximate, you know, it's really gonna depend on what the need is or, or where we land. Um, but we have to have Tabor reserves, so that's gonna be, you know, a recommended uh category, the three percent. Economic opportunities, that would be about two percent to provide for any business attraction of that sort. Natural disasters, about three percent. And then the remaining seventeen percent of the total twenty-five would be related to sales tax reliance.
So are you recommending that these buckets stay pretty static? So if we had a natural disaster, let's say, that required more than three percent, could we go into another bucket or?
Correct, exactly.
These are the rationales that make up all of our.
But it's, it's still a total pot, so to speak.
Right, exactly. Um, when we kinda look at it, you know, we always have to carve out the three percent for Tabor, but the remaining twenty-two percent are for these things here. We didn't wanna tie um directly to any percentage or dollar amount. And so we wanted a little bit of flexibility, cause you know, sales tax can be significant if we have another pandemic. And so we wanna have some room and flexibility in a lot of those areas.
And I think to put a number, just if some, some folks, there's some, there's some of the percentages and the numbers. That two percent would give council about a million dollars on our current general fund. That if you saw an opportunity, if there was a property that was critical to our future, something the council wanted to do, then you could choose to use some of that million dollars. Um, you know, if we didn't have it in, you know, other, other places that we'd look to take advantage of, of that opportunity. You know, the, the next uh category, the natural disasters. FEMA is there to help, but FEMA comes after the municipality has put out the reserves and has done the work that has to happen. FEMA is not sending checks day one of a natural disaster. Um, so this would give us about a million and a half dollars um as part of this, this reserve, we get earmarked. We could use as much of the reserve as we needed, but we think that that's a reasonable segment for that portion. And then the, the majority would be for that economic volatility and the, the sales tax reliance. That helps with some of the numbers.
The city attorney fund.
Sorry, you said it was a million, like council sought.
Not discretionary spending for us.
No, I know, no, no, but like, you said if there was an opportunity, like what kind of an opportunity? Like, give us an example.
If there was an economic development opportunity or a property that would be really critical and really, you know, really important, that the council thought was important to take ad- advantage of an, of an opportunity li- like that, acquire that property, um incentivize something. Um, then, you know, if we didn't have other resources, if the general fund were just so tight. Then this would be, you know, a source that you could access, that you could access if you wanna take it, to take advantage of that. I think one thing we haven't said yet, but access to these, these reserves would, would require communication with council um to do that. So we're looking, you know, you would be in the driver's seat for using these, these, these reserves. Um, but we were, we're trying to just lay out some of the rationale for having that amount.
Right, so we have open space funds that we get from the county um that we put into, obviously if there's opportunities, we can acquire properties for that. But, you know, the use of those, you know, the future use of those properties are pretty much constrained. This would provide kind of that buffer to potentially look for opportunities that city council may identify in the future.
Tiffany, what are the restrictions, if any, on the three percent Tabor requires?
So it has to be a, emergency as declared by the state of Colorado, I believe. Do you have that language, is that correct?
That's correct.
No, just, yeah, generally.
Yeah, so it's very, well, interestingly, whenever we had the pandemic, it didn't qualify um under a Tabor disaster. And so it's very limited and I don't know if anyone's ever actually used it. Um, so, yeah, it's just very limited, but it, we need it, you know, it could, there could be something that comes up.
And I think that's just there, so no city goes down to zero funds. So there's some sort of emergency that's, he's like, well, we have nothing, we can't do anything, so.
Yeah, I think in, in part it was designed to make sure that none of our municipalities were going bankrupt, so to speak. And so there's always that kind of bottom cap, if you will, in terms of what you have to be holding.
Like mandatory savings.
So twenty-five percent is the minimum. Is there, is that a range and is there a maximum that we won't be exceeding as well?
Yeah, so, you know, we kinda talked a little bit about that and I know in the, the information, you know, we have a minimum of twenty-five percent. We talked about um having some sort of range as well. And so one of the things that we wanted to talk about this evening is, you know, wh- what's a good range there? And so we, you know, currently we're operating under eight to eighteen. And so we would like to recommend eighteen to twenty-five percent. And meaning in the out years, you know, we could potentially be less than the twenty-five percent um for projections. Because, you know, we've mentioned before, you know, it's a five-year projection, it's gonna change the minute that you print it. Um, there's a lot of uh time between now and five years from now for us to make adjustments on expenditures, revenues potentially. So that we wouldn't get to um such a, a, a low fund balance in those out years. Um, so we were thinking eighteen to twenty-five percent. Um, I don't know, Jim, if you wanna add anything to that.
I don't think so. I think when you're, when, you know, our goal is to have a more, or have a um, a balanced f- f- five-year forecast to the extent possible. What naturally happens in most five-year financial models for cities is that revenues in the outer years are, might not, you know, if you're being uh responsible, kind of uh conservative, they're not gonna keep pace with your projected costs. Because you have those labor costs, you have other costs in the forecast, yet you still wanna, wanna remain conservative somewhat in your, your, uh, in your, your revenue projections. But what that does to the lines in the out years is you do, you might show a negative in the out years. Um, as with this, as Tiffany said, and, and acknowledgement that we're not gonna let, let it get there. But it's still a healthy forecast. But it's still a healthy forecast, um, if it starts to dip toward the end there. But I would say that if you have a balance in the first, you know, three years of the forecast, that's a pretty solid forecast, even if you do have the uncertainty. In the out years kind of colored by your, by a conservative, realistic revenue projection. So that's, that's kind of what, that's why I think having some range, especially in the out years, is helpful.
When I was looking at this, I was thinking twenty-five is the goal and I was, you know, thinking of a range of twenty to thirty. Just so, you know, if it's two percent lower one year, two, and we're, we're, we're already way above, we're out of compliance with our policy.
That quick, good.
Yeah, and so I think to have that, you know.
It can go away quickly.
And I don't want that idea to say there's a, a cap, a maximum that we won't go over and we'll spend it on something else, because that's also not necessarily sound policy.
I mean, I think the argument could also be made too, that like, collecting tax revenue for the rainy day fund also is going to the goods and services that people are paying that tax. Into, so like, the argument could be made both ways, that like, collecting over what our range is, is. Also not a good use of those funds, because like, we're not providing a good and service that we could be with an extra million or two.
And you'll hear, we have some thoughts on how to really treat that, that fund balance that we have now as a one time. Resource, so that we're not funding o- ongoing services, thereby taking it down further. Uh, but I think if we do that in a measured way with some of the one time needs that we have over the next few years. That'll give us a way to, um, to manage that down, show the use of those, those funds. Um, and kind of get to a more of a balance over time.
Yeah, that was gonna be, yeah, I wasn't suggesting putting that into operational, like, long-term expensing, but essentially one-off. You know, services or projects.
Tree removals.
Tree removals.
Tree removals.
Candle I want.
Tree sculptures, you know, or tree sculpture, but you just want.
So Tiffany, do you have any more, did you have a couple more?
Um, so I kind of wanted to just show what this would look like, um, so currently. Um, the bottom line is where we are currently, so that shows you what our projected fund balance is over the next five years. So in twenty twenty-three, it's twenty-one point four million dollars. If we had the recommended reserve at twenty-five percent, for example, our reserves would be thirteen million required. But I want to also caution, even though we have more of our reserves today, we do have a five year plan. And if you look at our current five year plan, our revenues are less than our expenditures. And so another piece that we're working on over the next five years and, and into the future. Is to try to balance the revenues and the expenditure, so looking at our revenues, looking at our projections. Um, can we make some adjustments there based on what we're seeing? Sales tax revenues being our number one revenue source. Can we increase that? Do we need to decrease it? Um, so that's one thing that we're also gonna work towards over the next several years is balancing that revenue and expenditure. So then your true balance left over is your fund balance to be used for those one time projects and not ongoing projects or ongoing personnel. So again, I mentioned, we have the three percent Tabor, so about one and a half million and then the remaining twenty-two percent would be, um. Kind of the, the, the bucket that's, um, in addition to that.
If we continue on like this, then are we still out of balance?
We're still at twenty-seven percent at twenty twenty-seven.
We are, yeah.
So it seems like it's, oh, it's okay, right?
If, if our forecast went out ten years.
It would not be okay.
It would not be, so our goal is to bring that line, which is now pretty steep into more of a. A lit- more balance. I don't think, as, as I said, it's kind of natural to have a little bit of falloff. Um, with your budget planning, um, we'd like to be. More balanced o- over that, that five years, because that gives at least, you know. All of us some, some security that our service level, our, our, our service levels are sustainable. Um, because as you see, if we're spending it down at that rate, um, it's not the right trend. It's plenty of time, there's no, I wouldn't sound any alarm, but I think as a practice, we're, we're willing to watch that and be very mindful.
We're going beyond five years, though, it's just blue sky anyway.
What's, what do you, what kind of generally speaking expenditures are gonna be going up that puts it out of balance?
Personnel is number one, you know, personnel costs.
Insurance.
Insurance costs.
City manager's office.
Reads, reads cost.
You just, uh, increase your budget by thirty percent or your, your personnel by thirty percent?
It's been a thirty percent, I just haven't spent towards it.
I mean, if you think about it, we're a service industry and so sixty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent of our expenditures are related to personnel. We have seen huge changes in the market in the last couple of years as a result of COVID and, and, and a number of other reasons. Our health insurance last year, um, we saw some huge spikes in that and so we had to increase our. Uh, percentage that we have to pay this year, both the city and the employee. And so, I mean, expenditures have been going up pretty significantly in the last couple of years and we have to respond to that and we have to respect that. We have to understand where our revenues are and can they support that. Um, you know, typically revenues go up three, three and a half percent, but our expenditures go up six and so you are, already you're at a deficit.
So that gives us natural challenge, because we have to li- live within our, within our means in the end, but. I think having, having this five year model and having, um, you know, strong enough reserves. Helps us to kind of demonstrate that sustainability over time.
Now, how did the reserves impact the budget? How does that work? Um, it's general fund, I understand that.
It, it, it's, it's kind of a balancing, right? So we, we have competing priorities, we have. Uh, a fund balance reserve requirement and we have, uh, you know, the need to have revenues equal expenditures. And so we have to take everything into consideration and, you know, we know where we need to be in the fifth year, we know what we can't, where we can be in that fifth year. And so what can we do over the next five years to make sure that we're meeting that requirement or meeting that goal? Um, if we're short in the out years and we want to increase that, then that means we have to either increase revenues. Or we have to look at expenditures and make a change in that area.
And maybe the budget might, whatever.
And you could, you might have to compress it.
When you look at FTEs, requested FTEs, those certainly come into play in terms of where we're sitting, in terms of that kind of linear.
If we set this policy, especially in the, the first couple of years of the forecast, we're gonna have to live, live to that. That percentage, so we're not going to, without council's direction. Um, dip below that, so that, that becomes another responsible constraint, it's a constraint, but it's a responsible one.
And being self-insured too, that plays a role, because the city's self-insured, right?
We are, for health insurance, yes, we are.
What about lawsuits that rate get canceled?
We, we have SIRS. Cause it doesn't happen.
One, all of our lawsuits, thank you. Um, we have SIRS to handle some of those kind of liability. Well, we have a couple that are, that are pending that are high dollar values.
Comes from, uh, it, the, the, the fines or whatever that we would have to pay.
Uh, well, we have, so we have our own kind of insurance broker who handles a lot of our property and liability claims. Um, there is a sizable amount of money that we pay into that to ensure. Certain levels of representation as well as coverage. Um, in the event that we did have a, a sizable claim that was in excess. I mean, it's almost like car insurance, so you have a deductible, we have a deductible, uh, depending on what's happening, sometimes we don't have a deductible. Um, so it varies, but we do carry a level of insurance behind the scenes for certain claims that come against the city.
Yeah, and our health insurance is self-funded right now, um, but you know, that's always a consideration when we go through the budget processes. Is that, is that working well for the city? Do we need to look at a change? Um, it's worked well in the past, um, it's, it's, it's a different landscape now. Insurance is a different landscape, um, expenditures are a different landscape and so those are just things that we have to consider during the budget process.
Trees now. I just planted two of them, well, I had somebody plant them and I tell you what, they are not inexpensive.
Arbor Day is coming up.
Got some free honey locust trees.
The honey locust.
Got a good deal on them?
Um, so, you know, just future steps, you know, we're just looking for a direction on, uh, fund balance changes or what, what policy you feel comfortable with. We can bring back a resolution to amend our principles of sound financial management, whereas that's where the reserve policies reside currently, it's part of our budget. Um, and then we can bring those back and then, you know, our task will be incorporate these changes into any future budgets that we're preparing or discussing. Definitely come back to you during every budget process to look at reserves and where we are.
So I think having, oh, I can't remember who said this, he said having a range, um, is important, not just say, set it at twenty-five. Like I said, I think twenty to thirty is what I would like, I don't know, she said eighteen to twenty-five.
It's your policy.
Yeah, and like some, you know, some reasonable like, you know, types, examples of capital projects that we could essentially spend excess reserve balance on. Just to maintain that, within that range.
Yeah, cause that's a lot of money to tie up on, nothing.
Exactly.
Until you need it.
Until you need it.
Yeah, and you know, the intention would be if you wanted to use any of the reserve, that hopefully it would happen during the budget process, we can plan in advance. Knowing that there could be things that come up during the year, um, on an emergency basis or something that we potentially would need to come back to you for, but. We'd really like to incorporate it into the budget process.
Why are you saying, Kyle, um, twenty to thirty instead of seventeen to twenty-four? I, I'm just, I'm not opposed to it, I just, it's different than what.
I just think if the goal is twenty-five, that's what the goal is, to keep it at twenty-five.
Oh, so it's kind of a midpoint thing?
It's kind of, that was the midpoint, because there'd be a range, because you know, you know, in the past, it's always fluctuated, I mean, we've been down to seven percent down to twenty seventeen. Um, and now we're up to forty-one percent, so, I mean, I think having a relatively broad range, but, uh, narrow considering the, the. Range that we've seen here is important, cause if, you know, I don't want, you know, this is for future councils, you say we are twenty-eight and a half percent. Someone say, oh, we're out of compliance, we need, we need to spend it down, whereas, you know, it might say, okay, mate, might, we'll get there naturally, um, so.
There's a little bit of bug factor on the high end and then you're increasing it on the low end.
Yeah.
I would say flexibility.
Flexibility. Fudge factor, not a council. And it, and it counts are not creative, it's not creative.
I was just curious about your.
Yeah, that's why, it's just to be flexible.
Years ago, there was a council that didn't want to have that high balance.
Right.
You know, and that, and it does, as you said, puts you kind of in jeopardy at some time.
I mean, I think too, this also, what, to what you're saying, it also kind of gets at the core driver of the risk as to why we are changing the fund balance right now. Which is kind of the precarious nature of our, of our revenue being so, you know, a handful of businesses essentially.
Too good to last.
And I, I mean, I think, I, I know we discussed this during the retreat as well and I hope. That this also kind of spawns that discussion of like, okay, we've analyzed that risk and we are making appropriate reserve accommodations to. To, uh, respond to that, but again, it doesn't, it still isn't getting at that primary driver of that risk, which is. Diversifying that revenue and what that could essentially look like for us.
It, it's also a policy, so it's not necessarily a law.
Right.
If there's.
We have a current policy and we're looking at.
If there's an emergency, something that needs to happen, it's just for council to be thoughtful going forward and for direction.
Yeah.
Immediate termination for the city attorney if we exceed thirty percent, uh.
Having just gone through the pandemic, which was so difficult, yeah, and you had to make so many changes so quickly. It's kind of top of mind and re- pretty recent.
I will say, the biggest, um, driver for, you know, for this city is the change in the sales tax landscape. You know, those companies that were top ten or top thirty companies prior to the pandemic are not necessarily the same as today. So there have been changes just in, uh, the economy and, uh, businesses. Um, you know, we have the marketplace, um, ability to, you know, require sales tax on remote sales. Which has completely changed the landscape of our sales tax revenues. Um, so I think it's just time for us to look at some of those changes and where are we today? Um, you know, we're only, what, a year-ish past the pandemic and who's to say it's not gonna change? Um, next year or the year after, we're still looking at a potential recession. Um, but I think it's just time to, to kind of look at that and, cause it's changed.
Tiffany, what was, what's about the average? Where have we been, like, I don't know if you can save our ten or twenty year period?
Average of?
Of the, of the reserve.
Fund balance.
With fund balance, just said it, if, if it's not too much to look at, I'm just curious.
Do math.
Keep talking, I keep, I keep.
So, I mean, everyone's good on a range?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anyone, I mean, have a different, different range? Well, I said ten, uh, twenty to thirty.
That's why I'm curious to know what the average is.
Well, she's recommending eighteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, I think eighteen to twenty-five is appropriate.
I'm just worried if we have, if we go eighteen, then you're, we're down. Much lower towards the seventeen percent.
We're currently eight to eighteen.
We're currently eighteen to eight.
And we hovered around it for two and a half.
I think some of my rationale for going a little bit lower is because we are at that eight to eighteen percent and historically, we have. Gone for that eight percent goal in that, in that last year. And so going from eight to eighteen percent is a, a significant change for planning and for projections. And so I was trying to get that down a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, we are acknowledging the, the model that we have now. That has a pretty steep, uh, assumption for that amount, you know, that we are gonna need some. So I, I think eighteen, um, gives us a little more room, you know, you'll be. It'll, you know, I don't anticipate that we'll need that minimum, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we can keep it a little tighter. Famous la- last words though, cause you know, as Tiffany's been through this too, so. Um, you know, the eighteen to twenty-five, I think that would be paired with the policy provision that we're not. That's the minimum, you know, if we have it, if, if it is higher, then we'll describe how we're gonna use that for the one time. Needs and give some examples of those, those things, so if it gets up to thirty, we're okay. I think we wouldn't, uh, but that's the reason, I think, for the eighteen, it gives a li- little more room as we transition. To, um, more of a static model.
I like it.
Any other thoughts?
I agree with the staff's recommendations.
Same word.
Alright.
I can't find my history for some reason.
I mean, it's ranged from seventy percent to forty percent.
But it's been down quite a while.
Seven and forty-one, so.
Lower end more. Yep, you're at seven thirty-two.
I know, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So, alright, well, do you feel like you have the direction you need?
So we're going with staff recommendation eighteen to twenty.
That's a yes.
Just double checking.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, you can continue your calculations over there.
Uh, I know, I'll find it two seconds after I sit down.
Feel free to interrupt, uh, uh, Tim's presentation.
Interrupt him at any time.
Alright, we have, uh.
Oh shit.
Next up on the agenda is a discussion on the formula for funding arts, culture and tourism with revenue from the lodgers tax. As council's all aware, we've had the, uh, Arts and Culture Commission kind of present some ideas in the past and. They're here to present some more ideas for us to develop this policy, how to just use these mon- monies.
Thanks, Mayor, so my only introduction will, will be to remind council. That following the successful election for the lodge tax, uh, council held a study session in December. And reacted to some of the recommendations from the Arts and Culture Commission, um, which were largely embraced. And, um, I know as Tim has worked closely with the commission and has liaisoned back with, uh. Tiffany and me and a couple of the departments, um, I'll say that I think what you see tonight mirrors, uh. Pretty much that feedback from December, including an allowance for some public art or other eligible. Uh, uses of the, of the tax money. Um, you know, there are some options that I know the, uh, team will, I will identify, um, for council. But I think the work over the last few months has really been about fleshing out how that could work, what the process would be. Um, so that's what I know we're gonna hear more about tonight and, um, I'll just recognize. Tim, our museum director, also Kate Ekel, our Arts and Culture Commission Chair, and J D McCrum, our Arts and Culture Commission Vice Chair. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tim and the team for some more information. Commission Chair and J D McCrum, our Arts and Culture Commission Vice Chair, so um with that, I'll turn it over to Tim and the team for some more information.
I'll, I'll just jump in real quickly before we uh turn it over to Kate and J D, just to echo what Jim just said. Uh, we did uh take seriously the comments that council made in December, we thought we had clear direction from them. So you will notice that the new item in this formula is a tier four and that's a uh a direct response to council's um intention that we try using the lodging tax for public art acquisition initially, so you will see, again, I think in the past, I think you've seen the three tiered formula, this will now be a fourth tier, uh that Kate and J D will introduce us to.
And I get to start, so thank you, Mayor and Council. We um continue to base all of these discussions really on the lodging tax language that was presented to the voters, so as a quick reminder, it's up on the screen, uh, we, it, this is a five percent lodgers tax on uh hotels, motels and short term rentals. It is looking at supporting arts and culture organizations throughout the city, uh as well as generating tour tourism initiatives. And the initial estimate was uh nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars annually, we're still, from what I understand, very comfortably in that range. Um, and it was uh very uh handily supported by the voters at sixty three percent approval and so that was a great um initiative for us to continue the conversations, so that's where we started.
So what I'd like to do is continue on it to show you examples of what other municipalities are doing in the area. So we have six examples of um area municipalities, so if we look at Durango, they are spending five point two five um percent or charging five point two five percent tourism, arts and culture, with twenty percent of that going to transportation transit. Golden is at six percent um for thriving community projects, so each municipality has kind of defined what they're gonna use the funds for as they see fit for their community. Longmont is at two percent, they've really done a lot in the last few years, um, and um I have a tentative appointment set up with them to look at what they've been doing. Um, then we look at Denver is eleven point seven five, it's got the Visit Denver, the Performing Arts Fund, and then the Colorado Convention Center is what those funds are going for, Aspen is at two percent um for their larger lodging tax. Keep in mind that they have a lot of hotels, motels and VRPOs, so they're coming in good.
Someone say that's almost all they have.
Um, and then Glenwood Springs is at five percent, which is what we're at. So as I turn it back to J D, um, we're gonna go um Littleton specific, but the photos that are in the the slides as we go through the tiers, those are actually photos of current art and architecture that we have in place in Littleton right now. So um art, architecture, performing arts, so as we talk what the funds are going for, these are good examples in the following tiers.
One of the things that, and and we've been working on this since uh spring of twenty twenty one is when the first direction came down to start to develop this policy and the Arts and Culture Commission spent a good deal of time researching, including those six cities and many others. And I think one of the things that we really observed uh that made a successful program successful was a degree of flexibility on trying to interpret and understand what the needs were at the time and respond to those creative initiatives and the organizations and the economy and and all of those types of things. So in our model, we tried to reflect that as well as really building off of the comprehensive plan and the charter for the Arts and Culture Commission and making sure that through the execution of this policy, we were responding to those council directives. We looked, of course, first on the SCFD model, which has been wildly successful in the Denver metro area. And that's how we started the tiered conversation is, is what would that look like here in Littleton? Uh, and what we're bringing for you tonight and and what you've heard before, as Tim pointed out and Jim pointed out, with the exception of the tier four, is a breakdown that really looks at fifty percent going towards Littleton's major cultural assets. That is actually direct language from SCFD's tier one is those major regional and cultural institutions. Tier two is an annual grant program at twenty five percent of the overall amount uh aimed at the smaller arts organizations and nonprofits. Tier three is focused on the Littleton tourism marketing, of course, the hotels are impacted by this lodging tax. We wanna make sure that they're equally benefited from it and and see the return on that. And then tier four, as has been pointed out, really reflects on the desire of council and the direction we received on December to allow for some additional uh opportunities in there.
Cater, Cater, J D, do we get some of that science and art funding too?
The city does not, individual organizations do. I don't believe the city does get any SCFD funding directly.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
We, we, Jerry, we have on occasion gotten some tier three project specific money, it's been quite a while since we have done that, so.
So on the next slide, the tier one, uh as it's broken down and is detailed in the policy, it, it was originally proposed with recipients listed in the ballot language as Bemis Public Library, the Littleton Museum, Town Hall Art Center and Hudson Gardens. Our policy uh has council designating those recipients based on Arts and Culture Commission recommendations. We are proposing that that is equally distributed amongst the organizations in that tier unless otherwise specified by you, by council. Uh, funds are intended to augment and not offset other city of Littleton funding. That I think primarily applies to the museum and the library, but certainly both Hudson Gardens and and the Town Hall Art Center are also recipients.
You mean like capital stuff like air conditioning or elevators or?
I think the idea is programming capital operations, Tim, if you wanna.
That's correct.
Uh, it really just meant to enhance what is offered to improve the service.
Not to, to, to supplant, so if there's a hundred thousand dollars that might come through lots, through lodgers tax, we're not supposed to re, you know, reduce the the museum budget by a hundred thousand dollars and replace it with the lodgers tax.
Right.
So it's intended to enhance.
Unless it was an emergency.
Right, perhaps, and that's where I think a few of these, and I, you know, I I appreciate the the commission's recognition that, um, you know, they're talking, they're trying to, I think, bring some consistency so can, for planning a- among those institutions, but also if of a given year, the council says, whoa, we need to either, there's a big need at the the library, so something needs to be you know, replaced or rebuilt, then we might have to go higher for that one year, bring the others down. Um, so council sets that overall direction, but in the policy, they would each have kind of an equal share of of that funding. Is that fair?
The, yes, the defaults would be an equal share of funding, but again, can be considered on a year to year need basis.
Is there any guidelines in terms of what the money goes towards? I, I, I'm thinking since it's a lodger's tax, we want, it's something that we see, you know, like additional programming, additional, you know, museum has an additional event or something.
That's very much what the funds are for, um, it's, I don't think necessarily for replacing air conditioning or those, those capital projects. It really uh is to build up the culture and art within the city. Um, and so to support those, yeah.
That was the intent on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just wanna make sure that it's not for swiping badges or something.
Yeah, and and one of, one of the things that that council will recall, we talked about last year during the budget workshop was, you know, just, just exactly this sort of thing. Both the museum and the library had, had personnel requests that we didn't have the budget to be able to accommodate. So I know council had expressed an interest in the museum and library, thinking about maybe there were ways that we could use the tier one lodging tax to, to do some of those. That would certainly enhance our ability to provide more programming, more, you know, in the case of the museum, more interpreters on the ground potentially, so yeah, Pam, that's, that's exactly the thought is it would, it would need to, it would need to be impactful to the community. It would need, and and in, and in particular, I think what we would wanna look at doing, um, I know on the museum side and 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 I've talked to the interim director at the library, he feels the same way. We would want to really be targeting um potentially underrepresented audiences, areas in the community, maybe that we're not reaching right now. So truly enhancing and expanding the programming that we're able to offer.
And there's a communication plan to say, and this is programs brought to you by the.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, yeah, that, that, we, we've worked with Kelly and her team, um, we'll continue doing that, but yeah, absolutely, that's gonna be part of the, and particularly this year when we're on a pretty tight timeline so that we can sync up with the city's budget cycle, uh communications could be really critical over the next six to eight weeks as we try to get the word out about particularly the tier two when we move into that discussion.
Oh, yeah, that great.
It, it's been an interesting process and some of the meetings that we had in discussing these tiers were conducted over Zoom meetings in the shadow of of the COVID pandemic, and so at that time, we talked about survival of institutions and and it's been very refreshing that at the moment, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about thriving institutions. Uh, again, the, the policy does allow for help to grant cultural institutions in in Littleton that that may be impacted by disasters or or fallen trees, whatever the case may be. But yes, the intent is to have citizens impacted um or notice the impacts. What you'll see on all of these, of of these slides are the last two bullet points, since that is the recommendation, the policy is drafted, is that Arts and Culture Commission collects applications and uh understands the needs and and questions and then makes a recommendation to council for the final approval of how funds are used, and that is true in all four of the tiers that you're gonna hear from us tonight. Uh, and then each institution would uh annually offer a proposal for what they're gonna do and then a final report at the end of the year showing how those funds were used and the impact of those funds on that institution and organization.
Is that just for procurement or others?
Uh, whatever they request, if if it's uh they want a thousand dollars to put on a play in the park and they say, here's pictures of the play in the park. Yep, and we serve.
But a council?
No, it's the report, so.
He would come back.
This is the Arts and Culture Commission.
Commission, we would share that likely, but if it wouldn't be a council action.
Okay, good, yeah, I didn't think so, good.
You're not, we're not monitoring.
But the council would approve those grants upfront, each year, the, the Arts and Culture Commission would make a recommendation to council.
And we approve the funding of it.
Right.
Upfront.
Upfront, yeah, yeah.
But the reporting is just comes back to you.
Cool, thanks.
On that tier two category, I might just make a recommendation about uh having some sort of internal process to diversify applicant pools, cause those things can get kind of very routine and and end up supporting kind of ongoing programmatic efforts of some of these grantees, so hopefully reaching out to new applicant pools as part of our strategy to to get new folks coming in, I think.
I think we've identified a list of over thirty.
It's wonderful, yeah, there's.
Arts and culture.
I, I think what we've found in our conversations is that one, these organizations are excited at the opportunity. Um, these organizations are now having conversations about collaboration together, which has not happened in my recent memory uh that this is gonna allow for, and then I think over time, what I'm hoping for is other organizations say Littleton is the place to be and to base my arts organization or my art gallery or my art whatever because of programs like this one. So I think, yes, and and certainly that's what the reporting will help us understand and and how to reach out and how to respond. The potential with all of this is tremendous and certainly we're excited to get a year or so under our belts and really understand how it can be maximized. But.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, you've got a hel- you've got a healthy pool to start with, I, I think it was more just thinking like years down the road, so we, again, can.
It's not the same old.
Definitely.
We got to.
Yep.
Yeah.
I had two comments about this, one with the recommendations in the report, I was make sure that, you know, all the applications come to council, not just a slate, these are the ones we want to approve, but the whole thing, so these are the recommendations, these are the ones we want to recommend and not these, just so it's not like a slate of the rubber stamp, we have this, this and this, but we see the entire.
So you're thinking, Kyle, we, we give you a list of here are all the applicants and then here is a list of the ones that were recommended.
Correct, and at level, level.
And it could be that, I mean, really, truly, the, I think, kind of the overall view is that we would like to give as many funds as possible to as many applicants as possible.
And then the other part of that with, I don't want to forget, we, you know, keep talking arts and culture, but that, you know, I know we've heard from um citizens about the, the historic part of it too, it's history is, is part of that culture, so that needs to be, be true.
Absolutely, and and tier two, I think really i- if an organization is creative, they can, I think, qualify for funding. We talk about minimum requirements and this is something that we would report back to council as well. In the policy that we've presented, the minimum requirements are, the organization must be located uh within the Littleton city limits and certainly serve the Littleton population as sort of the uh caveat of that, there are organi- and and this is something that as we do the application process and get into the first year, we're gonna have to understand what the requests are and the needs are. But for example, if an organization performs half the time in Littleton and half the time outside of Littleton, we're gonna have to take that into account as we look at their requests.
I'm gonna say I need to be a little more flexible with that, located Littleton, say, what if the Shakespeare Festival wants to do a production in Littleton, we're gonna exclude them because they're not located, but if it impacts the community, I think that needs to be.
Yeah, our, I, I think the intent is. It's not their post office box necessarily, but their programming, their, their, meeting their needs. Um, minimum of three consecutive years in operation to qualify for tier two funding, minimum of three consecutive years of publicly accessible programming. Um, and then a proven commitment to diversity, equity, accessibility and inclusion. Uh, that's something that is more or less standard with grant funds that the Arts and Culture Committee is dealing with anyways, SCFD and some counties have a strong requirement for that, so we're just trying to follow in line with what the best practices are.
She says like a, a, a priority given to that, but you know, I hate to see someone with a great idea that wants to kick, uh inaugural something or whatever it is to say you're not eligible because you've never done this before.
One of the things we've talked about, Mr. Mayor, is gay, is um doing some workshops, particularly with the small and midsize organizations that may not have gotten that way, may not have the resources to do that so that we can provide them with a template for how you can, you know, put together a, just an introductory DEI statement. Um, we do a kind of work in, in Congress with the, with what they, with the city is doing with their DEI.
I'm not worried about that, I'm just saying, you know, if someone wants to have some sort of, put an event on, but they've never done it before, you said, minimum requirement of three years, if they've, if they, it's just their inaugural event, they would be excluded, but I hate to exclude someone that's got a great idea that would really benefit the community just because it's only been done one year.
Minimal risk, yeah.
So I, I said, I like that as a, a priority will be given to uh organizations that have done this, so if we can fill out the entire bucket, but I don't want to say, sorry, you can't even apply if you don't meet that.
I, I don't imagine you'd have any resistance from the commission on loosening those requirements, I think we were trying.
Yeah, I just, I just want, you know, I understand the reason to have that there, a prioritization of these are who will be funded ahead of someone that has, but if there's someone that has a better explanation, you know, someone that's done something for twenty years in a row and it's not.
So we have in the language, um, organizations who meet the following requirements, would you like us to lessen up that language a little bit?
Preference.
Maybe a little bit broader.
Preference, yeah, I think preference.
Preference, okay.
I think if you soften it and in the recommendation slate that you make, noting where, for example, yeah, this organization has not done this type of activity or anything at all before, but it's new on the street, we'd like to explore. We'd just like to hear that feedback and we'll trust you all.
That makes sense.
And I think the other thing that we're hoping for through that is partnerships, and as an example, Shakespeare in the Wild is a new uh theater company in the region that does not meet those many things, however, they are partnering with Town Hall Art Center. Uh, and so uh there's, there's, it, it almost encourages collaboration, which I think is a good thing, but yeah, we're happy to soften that one.
Arts centers just looking for all these new people, come, come partner with those.
But, but one of the reasons behind that was longevity, we're trying to think about sustaining art and culture programs and we don't want something that is a one time thing that has no sustaining value.
But if this is the kickoff of the first.
Well, that's the partnership piece, right, is can it be sustained?
If it's successful, it may be able to do it in the future again.
Right. I think we can bridge that, figure it out, understanding very, very comfortably.
Yeah, and I think I, I'm comfortable with the preferred language.
First time familiar program.
And as we reach out to some of the more diverse communities that may have not got off the, the ground yet, then this is something where we would wanna.
And one of the things we've really talked about as a commission is, is making the application process as accessible and user friendly as we possibly can, because you know, we we know, particularly with a small organization, we know there are gonna be some challenges, so uh we're, we're, we're using as a template the um local giving application that the city has used with city council for the last several years, so modified somewhat to specifically look at the arts and culture, but I think you make a really good point there, that's that the, the, the more flexible we can be and the more accommodated we can be so that the funds go to the greatest, have the greatest impact, the better we are.
Moving on to tier three is again a fifteen percent allocation focusing on Littleton tourism and marketing. We believe that that primarily will be a city communications department led initiative, but just like all the others, they would make a, submit an annual proposal to the Arts and Culture Commission for review and that would then come back before council. Uh, and and just as the others at the end of the year demonstrate how those funds were, were spent and what the impact of them was.
I'll mention, there is an important partnership there with economic development too, I think, as we work more with our businesses, promoting businesses. It's, they're tied together, but I'll just mention that, yeah, both of those. Both of those.
And then, um, moving on to tier four is a ten percent allocation, and this was, again, this was a response to what we heard from council in December, uh, that really made room for public art acquisition, that made room for historic preservation and programming that doesn't necessarily fit neatly into one of the other opportunities. And so, uh, we felt that, uh, this was a a great place to start in our inaugural year and figure out how that might be met and what the requirements are or what the requests are. Uh, and then we'll be able to respond moving forward to that. Again, just like everything else, ACC recommends, council approves. And then our proposal and final report will be submitted for data collection.
Fine Arts Board found a piece of art that they thought would be really beneficial if they would propose it to.
Yes.
Yes.
Or wooden bears.
So if if you recommend and we approve, how does that, how do we do that in a timely manner? For example, if you found a piece of art, it's, you don't wanna wait six months to come to council.
I think you've done a tremendous transition to Kate.
Because we have timelines for you, so we will go ahead and hit the timelines. So we're gonna start with best case scenario. So this is the timeline starting in twenty twenty four. There is a following timeline that addresses twenty twenty three, so to allocate the funds that we're now collecting, but we wanna start in fresh in twenty twenty four. We'll determine the previous year's revenue total. Um, we will, um, close, uh, we'll open application windows for tiers one through four. Um, in February, we'll close it in March, compile the applications, determine eligibility, prepare the presentation for the commission. The commission will go ahead and review it. Um, we'll develop recommendations for budget. Then we'll present the budget to city council. Um, and then we'll do an approval of budget. Then with the funds that are collected, um, we'll go ahead and roll those out in twenty twenty five.
That's quick enough for you.
One of the things that we have thought of, because I think that's, that's a really good question, Ken, one of the things that we have thought about is in tier four, we will probably recommend to council that we have kind of a a a holding fund that we could use to meet out-of-cycle requests, because we think those are gonna come, and particularly in the first few years when we're acclimating people to what the these these request cycles are gonna be and syncing up with the, with the city, um, budget cycle. That can be a little slow and drawn out, so we will probably recommend to council that there's
Placeholder.
Exactly, a placeholder amount in in tier four that we can use to meet those, those off-cycle requests, because some of those will come in with a really short timeline.
Get those come in, will you come to council, or you'll just use that budget as you see fit?
I I think we would, I guess I would divert to the city manager. I think we would, we would assume that those would be appropriated to the commission to use to respond to those kind of requests, but we could do it either way.
My thought would be.
Yeah, we would want to.
So, yeah, when I was on the Fine Arts Board, it was usually an eighteen-month cycle, so you would open a request for proposals from the artist, and then you would go ahead and select uh, the piece, you would select the site, and then you would go ahead and take it to council and those, and then you would have it approved, and then you would do you need the the financials on that. So it does take some time to get that up and going.
They're not finding art on like Craigslist, having like, oh, we need to get, and to get mine this, this week here, you know?
I just wanna make sure that, trying to get on her agenda, it hasn't pulled you up. I mean, this makes sense, but for those.
This is.
I can see Kyle in the basement like carving, you know, with a chisel.
This, this is a little bit of a walk-before-you-can-crawl approach, and we had a number of discussions about, does i- if you have to apply for money in February and not use it until November of the following year, is that conducive to create? And probably not, and we'd love to discover in the first couple of years of this policy that we need more flexibility throughout the year to respond to amazing opportunities. But we felt this was the prudent way to start and get used to it for a little bit before we brought any recommendations for enhanced flexibility back to you.
We do expect that we'll, the commission will review this policy every year, building on the experience that we're gonna get each, with each passing year, and we, we do think there'll be revisions to it that will come back to council for approval.
Yeah, to JD's point, we're, we're crawling right now. We're crawling quickly, but we're learning how to walk.
Well, and like the, the tier three, the tourism marketing, that's Kelly Nardi's group. So how does that integrate with you? Because she's doing her own thing, coordinating with you. I mean, I don't want to stop her.
She, and she won't. She'll, she'll go ahead and she'll do her proposal at the beginning of the year, and then she'll just take off of it.
They'll have their budget cycle for the city.
Yeah, and it won't be the entire budget for that, for communications. It's really the, that portion of the lodger's tax that will be subject to the Arts and Culture Commission process, and then as, as Kate outlined, um, that will dovetail well with the city's budget process and then be folded into the council's budget process.
Those would be the added services that they're gonna provide based on these monies.
There isn't anything that requires us to expend those monies with any, any specific period of time, so when you're talking about kind of maybe slow playing a little bit of that as you, as the program comes into development, I mean, that's, I mean, certainly.
Oh, if we wanted, we could say, we're gonna save up funds for five years, have a one-granted opportunity, save it up for five years, have another granted opportunity.
Just probably not the best way to do it.
Case like, what are you saying?
The policy does say.
Let's let's do that.
Let's call that plan.
The policy does say that there's, the goal is to expend the funds
Correct.
um, as they're coming in, you know, in, in rough, you know, proportion to what's coming in each year, something like that, so, um, you know, because I would be less comfortable if if we were saving up ye- years and years of of funding. So that's the goal, but it is all subject to the Arts and Culture Commission recommendations and council decisions.
Yeah. And one of the things we have talked about. To show our citizens what they're getting for their monies.
And that's why we're really saying, we want people to come forward and say, what are you gonna do with the money? And then at the end, come and say, this is what we did with the money. So we want that accountability in the reporting.
One of the things we have talked about, that just in, in, to, um, acknowledge Reed's good question, would, there may very well, and and I could particularly see this this year when it's new and people are gonna be uncertain exactly how it works, we could end up going through this year and not have enough applications for the tier two, per te- potentially. Kate, Kate does, Kate does not think that's gonna happen. She may very well be right, but in worst-case scenario, if we didn't, that would roll into next year's, in the next year's tier two fund, which would give us more opportunity to to do some front-end marketing of it, but I, I think, I think in general, we're, we're, we're very hopeful that we can roll the money out pretty much each year as, as much as we bring in.
And I want to to honor and respect what the city attorney has said about being cautious, so we'll go to the flip page for twenty twenty three, and we are now drinking from the fire hose.
It's Jason talk.
So, we.
This is the fire hose.
Yeah, here's the fire hose, folks. We're gonna move quick. So we have collected funds out of the lodger's tax. We would like to go ahead and open the application window next month in May. Um, and then, um, close the application in June, compile the applications, um, run it by the commission in early July, present the budget request to the budget team and city council. Um, so open your calendars, approval of budget in October, November, and then January, we would go ahead and allocate funds.
Do it.
So.
Yeah, that's exciting.
And we do, we do have a tentative slot on consent on May two, as we said. Contingent on council, uh, giving us the direction to go forward with this, uh, we would put together a resolution, bring that back to you uh, for consideration and approval on May two, and then as Kate says, three days later, we're gonna open the window.
For one month.
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're already, from tonight forward, is the direction we get from council, we're gonna start the outreach process now. Our brand-new public art administrator, as nice as in, in the, in the audience, uh, she's gonna be doing a lot of outreach to different organizations. We've started some of this. We have a culture and art partners. Um, meeting on May tenth that will be entirely devoted to talking about the lodging tax and working through the, um, logistics of applying for tier two, so we're gonna try to start getting out the word just as quickly as we possibly can. We know that's gonna be the challenge.
And for tier two, is the goal kind of to spread the wealth? In other words, a lot of small, as opposed to.
I think, I think we'll have a mixture.
Depends on the applications.
I think we'll have a mixture.
And it does depend on the applications. There, there are several that we've identified already. Um, but those will be the individuals that are actually coming to the workshops that Tim is talking about, where we'll sit down with them with the application and really go through it. Um, some of the feedback that we've gotten from our arts partners in the city is that maybe they don't know how to project a budget, or maybe they don't know how to count how many attendance people they have show up at their concerts. So that's really part of what we're doing, is really helping those organizations with that.
What happens if it's not implemented? Then they don't get the money? In other words, we plan to have a Shakespeare in the Park. And for whatever reason, you know, the executive director of the organization quits and they can't have it, and we had allotted that money, then is there a way to say, okay, that amount of money now goes back into the pot, or you don't get it? But that, we had that at HPB when we were doing grants, where there was projects planned and they didn't have them, we held that money. And then we had to put it, at some point, we had to say, well, you're just not built, doing your modification or whatever, and we had to take it back.
And I think, Pen, that's a case-by-case basis. I mean, you know, it could be that maybe we have somebody else to step into that role to go, you know, in the case of an executive director, or in, you know, whatever, sure.
What if it doesn't happen? Because it was, it was a huge issue. Granted, we were talking about buildings, but this is the same thing, because you've got X amount of dollars and you've held it for somebody, and they're not using it, or they can't for whatever reason.
It's not a reimbursement program either, so.
It's cash up front.
I mean, if JD decides to take the cash and go to the Cayman Islands, you know.
And it's cash up front?
Well, I mean, if if the funds are are made available in January, then I'm presuming we would write the check in January to that organization. I think there's, there's two sides to that. One is, it's part of why we were looking for a track record of three years of established and and, you know, sort of a record of the ability to apply these. I think, and then in the reporting structure at the end of the year, if you haven't spent the money, then uh, I don't know if we can collect it back, but at the very least, we can not award it for next year.
Yeah, I think it might be dependent on what those monies are gonna be used towards, and, I mean, at the end of the day, the city is going to be the one issuing kind of the grant agreement, if you will, on behalf of the city to whoever the applicant is. So if it's to fund construction cost or something um, for their venue, it's like, okay, well, show us the contract, then maybe we'll give you the money, but, I mean, it's not.
There has to be something at, at one point.
It depends on what it is, I mean.
HPB said you have to have a building permit submitted before we're gonna give you the funds. I mean, there is, it's.
These are established entities that are already practicing, except for the one-offs that we talked about. So these are, they already have programming in place, so I don't see that as a huge issue, and if it is, I think it's something that we could do as a one-off.
Doing grand programs and getting burned a couple times.
There's a program they want funding for that takes place in September.
Sure.
Do we need to write them a check in January, or is there a time later on to?
We can work there. I think we, I think we can work with.
Yeah.
Some details to think about with that.
Yeah, we'll, we're, we're gonna work logistically with the finance department, and we're, and we're, again, mirroring this kind of on what we've done, uh, the council has done over the years with the, uh, the local partnership groups. So it would, it would be similar to that, I think. Um, so there may be, there may be some opportunity to recoup with the city attorney. There may be some opportunity to time things. We'll, we'll, we will certainly work within that framework.
I think some sort of contract and proof of performance and, um, what happened at HPB is, well, I intended to get this done, and so keep the money for me, because I just was delayed. And of course, you wanna work with the applicant, but then you start thinking, we had, you know, three-fourths of our money tied up in this project, and it's never, it's not happening. You know what I'm saying? I'm just thinking, just kind of, not the worst case scenarios, but just be prepared for things that come up, and we don't wanna be out the money or not keeping it to somebody else.
A little work to minimize risk.
Thank you.
You got it.
A little contract.
And if it goes poorly, we'll, we'll blame JD, so it's fine.
I'm very used to that. I'm comfortable.
We'll go find him in the Cayman Islands.
Pretty sure Reed was gonna blame me, so I like this better.
So moving on, this is a very fast track, so, um, as we look at that, um, I think the next part, JD, you are up.
You, you, they were my highlighted slides, but you're welcome to them.
No, you're good.
Um, there's really three questions that we were seeking direction from tonight, um, that we will detail here. The approval of the revenue distribution, the allocation of the percentages by tiers, and then, uh, the third is the status of Hudson Gardens. So the first, uh, operations for approval, uh, we, we really outlined three options for the council to consider. The first is that the Art, Arts and Culture Commission makes recommendations for distribution or dispersment to council, uh, and then council approves the final allocation of those funds. The second would be, uh, council considers and designates the art, or council designates Arts and Culture Commission for approval of all all distributions, and it doesn't come back to you. Uh, and then the third would be council approves, say, tiers one and two, the larger amounts of those, and the Arts and Culture Commission uh, looks and approves at tier three and four. Our recommendation is the first of those, which is, everything is reviewed by Arts and Culture and then brought to council for, for final approval.
It's the staff's recommendation too.
Everyone, the city attorney's recommendation.
The second, um, is the, the percentages.
Can we, can we run back to that real quick? Can we bring this up again in a year? I mean, I, I really do want to, like, obviously, the inaugural year, sure, we're gonna be involved. Like, we kinda wanna see the direction of things that are going, but I would love to empower the Arts and Culture Commission to be able to take on this responsibility in future years.
I think they are, but I think especially with tax revenue, you know, rather than having just this committee spend tax revenue, I think it needs to come back to.
And I'm sure we'll agree with them in ninety-nine percent.
That's why we appoint a commission.
Most cases, yeah.
I, I, I think we, we imagine in some cases, in the first year, you review this for forty-five minutes, and then in the second year, re- review it for thirty minutes, and then as we all build up the expectation.
Don't say rubber stamp. Don't say rubber stamp.
No, I will not say rubber stamp.
I mean, I don't envision it being much different than how we approve a lot of our grant funding right now. Um, when the city contributes certain monies and those monies, you know, we've gone through different processes in terms of scoring, who's going to get certain grant funding. And I envision it probably going forward to be somewhat similar.
But if we look at like HPB and their grant-making, that does not come through council.
Right.
And so I think a tier two would be completely appropriate for, because they're very small, for Arts and Culture Commission to kind of approve. Um, now, the caveat to that is, you know, we have folks who are enmeshed in the arts community, and so there is some conflict of interest stuff, so we just need to make sure that that's insured and that's, that's happening, and that's reflected in minutes and discussed when those things are being approved.
But the HPB is like seven dollars in grants, right?
They're considerable.
Fifty thousand a year, but it's.
I mean, we're talking five hundred, we're talking a million here. A million overall, but.
Not for tier two.
Not, but not for tier two overall.
Well, I think what we're saying, though, is at least for the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can evaluate. I, I feel comfortable with.
That was all I was suggesting.
Overseeing and, and take, and seeing what the recommendation is, but to just look at it before it's final.
We'll, we'll certainly be bringing the policy back to you to look at again. I think that's, I think that's inevitable.
When you're dealing with tax revenue, which is coming from, quote-unquote, citizens, or those persons utilizing some of our entities, I think transparency is always probably the best course of action until everyone's comfortable where those things are going.
I agree.
Our second question for direction then tonight is, are the percentages, percentages as proposed to you tonight acceptable, or would you like to adjust them? That is fifty percent for tier one, twenty-five percent for tier two, fifteen percent for tier three, and ten percent for tier four.
I like your recommendations.
Yeah. Never buy a bronze, but.
Is that gonna be enough money for the tourist portion of ten percent?
Yeah, we, we checked with, with Kelly and her team, and with Cindy and her team, and yeah, they're.
It's fifteen, right?
That, that was my only concern, but, um, yeah. And we, we can come back and revisit it if for some reason it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not her budget. I mean, her budget, she has a city budget too, right? So this is kind of supplementing it.
This is a hundred thousand dollars.
To do, so that won't.
The civic for tourism marketing.
Which we, we don't have, we, we don't have that program now, so this would be enhancement.
Good, good call.
For the record.
This would be a lot of eight-by-ten glasses of the city attorney around town.
Let's, let's think about how we.
Attracts people a little too.
Let's think how we define art.
And then our third question is Kate's.
Yeah, so, um, originally included because of the size and impact of attendance, events, and programming, um, Hudson Gardens was in tier one. Um, with the elimination of the private foundation, um, and then it's now governed and managed by S, S P R D. The prospect of collaboration, new vision for the future facilities of twenty twelve, twenty twenty-four funding, do you wish to continue including it? We've had recent information that maybe it is still something that we want to include in the tier one with regards to program.
City manager wants to add something.
Yeah, just, just, uh, reminding, uh, council that we made, that we have, we committed last year to to South Suburban to, you know, eh. um, to South Suburban to, you know, to enter into some, some visioning and some market analysis to help figure out how, you know, South, how Hudson Gardens does fit as a major, you know, asset for Littleton. Um, you know, now with their transition and all the work that's happening there, they've let us know that that's probably a late twenty twenty three, early twenty twenty four project, but I'll say that I think it's, it's very important that we have a seat at that table. And that until we can help, we can figure out what their, their future is, you know, I would certainly recommend, um, you know, being strategic with them and doing all that we can to optimize Hudson Gardens until we see where the, where the chips fall. Um, so this would be an excellent source for our portion of that funding. We don't know what it's going to cost yet. Uh, there will be some, some study developed probably for the first of twenty twenty four, I'm guessing. But, um, you know, I've, I've, you know, I know Tim Sheridan, I've spoken with J D too, but, so I'll, I'll turn it back to you for how that settles with you.
Um, you know, and, and like the other applicants, they will be expected to, you know, justify what they would spend the money on and what that's going to look like at the end. And so no funds until that is done, uh, would be my recommendation on it. But I think it's worthwhile keeping them because it's so up in the air that we just don't know what they're doing right now.
I mean, we're still partners.
Still there, yeah.
Still here, yeah.
And so in our ballot language that went to our voters, we, we specifically called out Hudson Gardens as part of the big four, if you will. But they're not necessarily guaranteed to any of those funds, especially as they go through this transition period in terms of what the future looks like, what their future programming looks like, so.
I think the city attorney wisely suggested that we use such as.
Such as, but not limited to.
I think that, I was, Ashley put that in, wasn't it?
That was not Ashley.
And they would have to qualify and propose. They're going to have the Littleton Symphony this, um, programming this summer.
Oh, good. Yeah, I just found that Littleton Symphony and stuff.
Yeah, and when they're also looking at some comedy programs too that we learned about.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so may not be the big names like Donnie Marie, but you know.
City Attorney Stand Up, right?
That's part of the ten percent that's going to the promotion of, of staff right there.
I think you've got some reaction on, on moving the jury.
So with that, I will go ahead and let J D wrap it up for us.
I, I just, my wrap up would be, I so appreciate council's vision throughout this entire creation of Arts and Culture Commission and then the support of the lodging tax. I'm incredibly excited for what we're going to see over the next couple of years, and I just thank you very much for that ongoing support and encouragement. I think we have clear direction with, with how to proceed with this.
You didn't sound like it, or did you?
Yeah, we do.
I think it's clear.
I think it's clear.
The only thing that maybe are we totally clear on is like, is this going to be the direction, the one, the one we picked about approval? Number one on.
For this cycle.
For this, like, are we going to come back in a year and evaluate or?
Always. We, we, we will bring back an after action report for council, probably each year. Um, however, in whatever format the manager wants us to do that, but yeah, we'll certainly come back to you and, and.
And who knows what the next council, there could be one, two or three new council members in a year, so you never know what they think.
It could be seven.
But couldn't you, theoretically, it could be seven.
Yes, thank you Reed for that.
And I do want to.
Get satisfaction being city attorney.
There could be a new city attorney, city manager here too.
Fair enough. I'll drag Jim in.
I, I think we're going to take our.
Way to pick up on Q's tip.
Thank you so much.
The policy when it comes back, I do, I do have a couple ways for the record. I have, uh, make sure that we, that we include, uh, historic, history as a use in the tier two. I was not sure if that's in there. Um, and then priority for, for three years' experience, or priority points, however we say it, for three years' experience, but not a not a requirement. And then I have keep, keep Hudson Gardens in the formula at least throughout their transition until a future year.
We have those notes as well.
All right.
Thank you, council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, optimistic I am is how quickly the next session, section will go. I'm going to take a break, because I got in the bathroom, so. Back in five minutes.
Going to channel my inner rage.
All right, it's eight twenty six. We're back from recess to our final, um, discussion item was discussion of Senate Bill twenty three two thirteen. Uh, this is the, the housing land use bill, and so the idea is to discuss whether, uh, the city will take a formal position on the bill. Most of the other cities in the metro area, um, and the state, uh, have been weighing in on the bill here. Uh, and so for people that may not be aware, uh, our Senate Bill two thirteen is, you know, um, bill to, uh, address, uh, housing kind of in this, in this, the state, um, targeted mostly at the, the front range and the larger communities here, um, that would kind of take over the land use, uh, decisions from the city, so. Um, I'll let the city manager and assistant city manager, Osher, kind of will take away.
Thanks, Mary. I think you've kind of outlined it at the level that I would, so I'll, as a interest of preserving time for council's conversation, I'll turn it over to, um, to Kathleen, you can give just a high level overview of the main provisions in the bill and a little more of an update on how the city has been engaging, and then we'll uh, turn it over to you for your, your discussion.
Okay, well, you remember the last time we talked about this on the twenty first of March, there was no bill, so. It's now, now there is, right? So now we have the officially drafted, uh, legislation. Um, I think probably, you know, just from our perspective of engaging both with the governor's office and other opportunities that both mayor, you've had, I think council member Grove through C M L, you know, we've really tried to, to stay part of this discussion and, and try and um, offer as much feedback as we can on the concepts of the bill that we were seeing before the legislation was introduced. Um, I think what, what we see overall is the, the details in the legislation, um, we have some concerns about whether or not those can deliver on the concepts that we've seen floating around. Right now, the, the bill had, was introduced last week and testimony was offered. That, uh, I think dragged on, did you say for?
Twelve hours.
Twelve hours of, of testimony, so, uh, lots of things to say. I think, um, a number of people, like, when you look at the lineup of, of who testified, it is everything from those that are monitoring the legislation to opposing, to, uh, supporting, to, uh, an interest in amending. We understand from the governor's office now that there are roughly thirty amendments that may be considered. Uh, as part of your packet, those conceptual amendments are shared. I think based on our experience so far, the concepts oftentimes are not, we're not seeing as much alignment as we would like to see with the official language that's in the legislation, so I don't expect much difference between the, the amendments and, and then when we see that actual drafted language, I'm not sure if we'll see that, uh, opportunity for the concepts to be. The bill is, you know, really one of the most sweeping changes to land use policy that's been proposed in the state. And, um, would, you know, change, uh, the responsibility of land use in, in some ways um, away from local communities. Uh, basically, it would create a model statewide code is one of its biggest deliverables. Um, we do see a number of different dates in terms of when the legislation would take effect. So, uh, that, that does give us some pause because it could be as, as early as, uh, the end of this year. Points, you know, with, um, compliance stretching into June of next year, the end of twenty twenty four. There are a number of things in the legislation that are yet to be defined. I think our conversation here with you and, and understanding how your support for affordable housing has advanced, um, those are some of the provisions that we're not seeing in the legislation. Um, the affordable housing sort of menu of strategies is something that'll be defined later. So there are, you know, just a, a number of things that have caused us some pause, so we've tried to reflect on those with um, the pieces that were included in your, uh, council packet, but we would love to hear from you tonight, some of either questions, discussion, and I'll do my best to, to try and answer those. Um, but, uh, I'll open it up to, for, for council.
I want to just hit on a couple more points that I, I think I've, I've heard from, from council or her concerns, you know, there is, uh, you mentioned Kelly, the Kelly Kathleen. I'll get it right sometime. The, uh. Oh, this one at first. The lack of, uh, affordable housing, uh, strategy there, or there, it really doesn't tou- touch that, um, you know, the other, one of the other factors, uh, you know, especially for, for, uh, for Littleton is the exclusion of the unincorporated county parts of, of the, of the state, is that will probably dramatically affect growth in the, in those areas as, as compared to here and traffic and all of tho- those things. Um, I think the, you know, density requirements near transit, we think that's a good thing, but until we have trans, you know, more reliable transit, more east-west service, um, we're, we're, we're concerned that that's not something that will, will be, uh, be delivered upon. Um, and just, I think it's in the memo, but it bears, or the staff report, but it probably bears a comment that we have you know, twenty three hundred, um, units of housing in our, our pipeline. Um, so for Littleton, and, you know, we've made the progress that we've made toward middle housing and, and we, we're poised for, poised for more this summer in that area and also for A D U's. Um, so we're concerned really about the impact that the legislation if passed would have just on those, those development plans, will be, you know, with the likelihood that at very least, those developers would have to go back to the drawing board and they'd have opportunities to rethink projects. Um, and at most, I think the, um, the uncertainty of what the legislation means and potential litigation would, um, kind of have, they could have a chill on, on Littleton's progress. So those are a couple of key, you know, I think, points for the, the staff that has concerns about, um, I'll turn it over to.
Yeah, so, and the idea is, do we want to take a position, um, which I think we probably should, I mean, I think it's, as we've had discuss, as the metro mayor's has had discussions and then around whole county, it's, uh, you know, it's seems to be, uh, more effective when we kind of speak together, uh, kind of with one voice, kind of all kind of saying that we can say different things, but the same issue there. And so I was, I was down at the Capitol last Thursday and testified, you know, testified, uh, against, uh, the bill. I mean, the big concerns I have is the, the pre- preemption of, uh, local control here of the state basically telling us what to do. Um, you know, as I said to the, the senators, that I support a lot of the policies in it, and I think we should be able to enact some of them here in Littleton, uh, but not have the state force them on us, and also with the inequity, as the city manager said, where we have, you know, almost, uh, two hundred thousand people that's live on our west and southern borders that are not included in this um, in this legislation here as well. And so I was actually surprised to see, uh, various county representatives there um, testify against because they were concerned of the kind of conflict it will drive between municipalities and counties, uh, where there's different, different rules there. And so it was, uh, various counties that, they didn't even have to participate because they're not really affected since counties are basically excluded. Um, and so, as I said, I think a lot of the other municipalities have taken, uh, uh, positions, uh, against, you know, Centennial did last week, unanimous position as well, so. So that's.
Inglewood did last night.
Inglewood did.
Yeah, most of, not most, but a lot of the jurisdictions, we're meeting yesterday and tonight we're meeting, so. In terms of getting a gauge for what our surrounding municipalities are doing, it's a little, it's a little tough for those who haven't come in yet, but.
And it's been hard with the timeline because the bill was introduced on the twenty second. And it's been hard with the timeline because the bill was introduced on the twenty second, I think is what it was, and then they had the hearing on the sixth. Um, and people wanted to, you know, most people don't take a position on something they isn't introduced, so waiting for that. And I think a lot of people are waiting for the testimony and kind of see what some of these amendments are to hear some more feedback. But I think a lot of how quickly the legislation's moving, there's four weeks left in the in the session here.
Yeah, other than perhaps the Boulder mayor, maybe Boulder went third direction.
Boulder hasn't taken a position yet.
I'm not aware of any jurisdiction.
The mayor did.
Yeah, the mayor did. I'm not aware of any jurisdiction um advancing a resolution in support of two one three. I think it's just, I think it's too challenging for municipalities. It's, you know, it's an affront to home rule and land use policies that have been in place for for decades in our state. And too much of a preemption issue that most can get behind, other than the policy aspects, the altruistic aspects of it.
And I, you know, one of the concerns I have is that this passes, you know, our, we just spent, you know, better part of five years redoing our code and comprehensive plan. And, you know, rather than moving forward and having staff look at actual site plans and building plans, we'll have to spend more time to revamp everything again here. I think that could be a time suck for staff here, so. I mean, I think if we can, I would support a resolution in opposition of it with some language, kind of saying if there unless there's some amendments that really get at the heart of the uh preemption of local control issue.
When did the amendments?
No one knows.
Yeah, that's it's a little bit unknown. Uh, our meeting last Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Last Wednesday with the governor's office. Um, they shared the concepts that are in your packet and then very little uh detail on when the amendments would actually be presented. So I took away from that meeting that they probably haven't yet been drafted. You know, they're, they've got a kind of a running list of where people have expressed some issue challenge and, you know, what they want to address, but I think that language is still very much um in development.
I'm I'm assuming also they were, the committee heard it on, it was only testimonial only, testimony only last Thursday, so there was no committee action. Um, what I heard was this week, probably maybe late this week, next week, that the committee will hear it again. And that's when the amendments will be introduced. And I'm sure each of the committee members, judging by some of their questions, they had specific uh thoughts on how the bill could be changed. Some might be conflicting with each other, um, but it it'll be a an interesting.
What's the final vote?
Well, it has to, it's got in the committee, it's gonna pass out a committee, and then it goes to the senate, and then the senate votes it, and then it goes to the house.
But but when is the session in?
On the sixth.
Of May or June?
May, May.
May, May sixth.
I think there's just too many amendments. It's, and from what little I've seen at CML, what they do is they wait for a problem. And then they, oh, you, let's take this problem and fix it next year. I think with the number of amendments we're looking at and the broad scope of it, I agree with you about home rule. I I think we oppose it. I I don't think we oppose it unless you have these amendments. I think we just out and out say and recommend, I don't know if this is part of it or not, that maybe they take parts of this. And maybe i- if they want to look at it, but still it takes away our control, spent so much time on the code. I'm I I'm not for advocating.
So I know that there are some, and I I will tell you that CML I think has done a good job in terms of providing information and advocating in certain respects. I think they are in support of, you know, perhaps offering these amendments. Myself personally, having witnessed the state legislature, we are, we're less than a month left with the session. I don't know, I know there have been, I know there have been some amendments introduced, you know, in terms of picking pieces of this that we don't like and offering amendments. I just don't think that there's a real opportunity and, you know, I'm sure others will say, no, there's totally an opportunity to change this bill. But with this timeline, I don't know if anything that is suggested will actually make its way into the final bill. And so to your point, we're left with a bill which is like, holy smokes, what is this? And then perhaps next year they're offering, you know, amendments to address certain things. I'm.
Could they table it until the next session, until the fall session?
I mean, it could die in committee, they could certainly, you know, bring it back next year.
It it kind of starts all over.
Same thing, I'm just.
Yeah.
And my other concern, just from a city perspective, perhaps a slightly legal perspective, is this, you know, I know when the bill came out, they talked about the amount of citizen engagements, group engagements that they had in forming the legislation. I know that that was kind of my highlight, hey, we had a hundred and twenty group meetings. I'm not aware of any city that was ever part of any of these meetings. We were never consulted, and not just Littleton, but any city, any city town. And it's just kind of just formed kind of around us, and here you go. And it's like, well, gosh, if you had brought us in earlier, perhaps we could have, you know, addressed some of these issues, which, you know, are regional issues for sure, some of what they're trying to accomplish, but.
Has anyone asked who the hundred twenty community groups were?
I I'm not sure. I'll. It was all the people standing on the steps with the governor that day.
Yeah.
I I I was not making that joke.
There are, there are, um, on the, I think it's the governor's site, there are testimonials in support of the legislation. So they number roughly a hundred and twenty, and so each of those individuals and their organizations are noted that way. So I I think that's probably the best sort of collection of of who's weighed in early in the um process of drafting the legislation.
I think also state agencies were part of it too, DOLA and um Energy Office, they were, they're testifying too, and I think they were.
As a city, I think we should, we need to take a hard no. This, I think uh two thirteen just needs to die right now. There's too many issues with it. Uh, for one, I I I think it does, uh, it it's a shift of power from citizens. All of a sudden bureaucrats are gonna tell us how we need to zone our city. We have heard from our citizens, uh, oh, gosh, how many meetings did you have? You did a lot of meetings.
I mean, just to get through the comprehensive plan, it was two hundred and sixty-one.
Two hundred, yeah, and 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 reading the the bill, and I've read it three times now, uh, it's a mess. And it, and and much of what we have done over the last four years is in conflict with it. Um, I I think in the mayor, or not the mayor, the uh Governor Polis did say that, oh yes, cities still have maintained control. But we we maintain control as long as we write it in accordance with what the state wants. When you read it, that's what it says. You have to do what the state wants, and if you don't, then the state just comes in and does it anyway. So it needs to just die. We need to have a hard, and Jim and I did talk about this. We need to do a a hard no on this one. I think CML, I thought CML was a hard no.
CML has an opposition letter um for various jurisdictions to sign on if they would like to. Um, obviously, they're still trying to work with, you know, some of their lobbyists with those advancing the bill to try to get some of those changes, but.
CML likes to keep a seat at the table.
That's the thing with saying a hard no is if you say hard no, then it's also like, okay, well, you're not gonna be part of the discussion.
That's okay, I'm I'm, that's part of negotiations.
I mean, they're a hard no on the local control. They said, if you get rid of the local control, then let's talk and figure out how we can make things work.
There's a lot of good theories in there.
Hmm, yeah.
But I think what is not in there is it kept saying that the 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 general assembly finds that lo- locality, locales, whatever they call this. We've screwed up. That's what it tells us. If you read that thing, it says that in there twenty-some times.
Maybe that's the hard reality we need to face.
The hard reality is, Steve, is that it's the state that has helped to screw things up. They're the ones back in two thousand one who came up with a one, one item was the construction defects. Therefore, we ended up having this middle housing problem because developers weren't building anymore because they were being sued. And now we, now we're in this problem. They're coming in like, we're gonna magically fix this for you because you cities have screwed it up. That's just not the case. I I take offense to it the way that they wrote it. They make it sound as though they're gonna come in and fix it because we screwed it up. It isn't. It was state legislations that did it way back at the turn of the.
And that's the inequities that the mayor mentioned, that none of the, you know, unincorporated regions, the, you know, the city of Littleton mailing address is a hundred and fifty thousand people. We as a city proper are less than fifty. So we have a hundred thousand people that use the Littleton mailing address that are in unincorporated Jeffco for the most part. And there's some in Dougco, but they're not subject to this.
They're now in Douglas County, but a Littleton mailing address.
So, yeah, I mean, you you look at Highlands Ranch, they have whatever, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand people in Highlands Ranch. Sterling Ranch is gonna have thirty thousand people. None of those folks are subject to two one three because they're special districts. And so they're out, unincorporated areas of the counties are out. And to your point, uh, Jerry, it's, we're blaming the cities for for this issue.
Yeah, and I and and I'm I'm, I take exception with that. I I think the city of Littleton has done a very good job over the years. They have done a great job. It's our state legislators have screwed this up, and they're not taking up, when you read that thing, nowhere do they take a blame for anything. It's all us.
Really? I thought our comprehensive assessment, our comprehensive thing, it took like fifty years for it to get redone. So to me, that does not say that city, our city was completely responsible.
And and do you like, you moved here, you moved here because our city isn't good, it's always been good. We had an old comprehensive plan. We make fun of it that it was an old comprehensive plan, and it was time to do it.
Twenty years, okay.
But it did, whatever the years is.
Took forty years.
But it, but the city wasn't going down to twos because of that, you know, we just, we did need to redo it. You know, we put too much emphasis and it took so long.
I don't see how new development is affordable housing.
It's not necessarily, but it's a prerequisite for it.
I don't, I don't see how you you build a unit that costs six hundred and fifty thousand dollars or to purchase is affordable housing. Because it's not going to, unless they get, unless they um make it so small or get government funding, it's not gonna be cheap housing.
It's thirty percent of their income, you're right.
So you can't have affordable housing without housing supply. We are not building housing. Like, we're just barely starting to get on track to building housing. But the scale of what we are doing, the the problem is outpacing the scale of what we can do individually. So and that's.
Well, I know in the city of Littleton, and Kelly, I know you remember this one because you were, you were on the sixty-five hundred dollar units. Remember, we talked about we needed sixty-five hundred units?
Which now we find out is we're a population problem.
We didn't come close to what our estimate was going to be, and then we still have, what, what'd you say, twenty-three?
Twenty-three hundred units in the pipeline.
So we have a lot of units in the tubes now.
And what does Arapahoke County have, like a hundred and eighty thousand in the pipeline?
Hundred and eight thousand, yeah.
Like whatever.
Yeah. Um, that's inclusive of of the community.
So.
It's in the pipeline.
That's not an addition, that's cumulative.
Hey, let's, we have a multi-site conversation, let's try to focus on one conversation at a time.
So two one three doesn't actually guarantee affordable housing.
Right.
So, I mean, in terms of supply and demand and the thought of economics, macroeconomics, that you get enough supply, then you know, demand, then it evens out and prices go down. So it doesn't actually have any guarantees for affordability within two one three, even if that is what perhaps one of the goals of the entire piece of legislation is. The other, not, another concern.
Wow, go ahead. No, no.
You're talking too much.
No, it's 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 okay. I I, you know, I think people, I I think the bill was sold as a silver bullet for housing affordability. It is one of many com- policy components that have to happen at the state and local level in order for affordable housing to become a major, a larger portion of the share of the market. It is, it in and of itself does not solve the problem. I don't think, I mean, I am not under any illusions that it does, nor am I under any illusions that it's perfect or equitable. Um, but a- again, here, while, you know, while I'm talking, I would take a position of abstaining on it and and taking a neutral position on it because the senators are gonna bear the brunt of the responsibility.
The citizens are gonna bear the response because of the.
Hold on a second, wait, wait, I, the the senators who were elected by those citizens are going to bear the responsibility. And if it does fall on its face, that is coming back on the senate. But to my personal views, that there is, these are the prin- the principles in this bill are things that we should be striving for. We don't like the mechanism by which it is done. And I think it's okay to give up a little, a little power in order to have that collective responsibility be shared. That is my view.
Can can I say something too about that? We keep saying that they're taking over home rule. We're taking it, they're taking away our ability to have home rule. Don't you think that the governor might be saying, instead of taking it away, I'm gonna take the brunt of the anger that's gonna come from the NIMBYs or the ones that use whatever language they want to use to fight development? Not my backyard, too many people, it affects community character, whatever the reason is, right? So let let the whole estate, let the governor's, let the state take that brunt. We're behind, I know, I know, I know. This is my simplistic view. This is my simplistic view, and I know it's simplistic. I'm with Steve. I'm not a hard no. I want to see the amendments. I talked to somebody today in the nonprofit world for housing, and she said, you know, there's some, there's some good things about this bill, and there's some things that are very lacking in this bill. And they're working with the governor's office to get that language in there about affordability, very concerned about displacing people that live in aff- in affordable houses now. So I think I'm I'm of the opinion, I want to see what the amendments are. I know this is a big change. I'm getting the evil eye of the city attorney, but this is a regional problem. It's regional. We're not gonna solve it here in the city of Littleton. Inglewood's not gonna solve it. We have to come together regionally. And I get, that's why I'm asking if there's any way for this bill to stall, to have more eyes, more um experiences, knowledge, um, put into this bill and bring it back. I don't understand why they.
If stalling it is your goal, then opposing it as it's drafted would be the way to get it to not be passed as it's. So I think, I mean, I I I don't disagree with wanting to hear what the amendments are. I don't, I think the timeline doesn't allow for that. And so I think I I've, there's three of us here, and we know who's not here also uh would oppose it.
You think?
Um, so I think to draft a resol- I'm here in support to draft.
Okay, well, for the record, I I don't want to be a hard no either, but I do want to make sure that we're advocating and taking something that where we're saying that's specific affordability and the anti-displacement. I think that is really important in making sure that those amendments capture that. And I would ma- rather much see us use our soapbox to advocate for that in the bill than to say, we're out, this sucks.
Well, I don't think we're saying we're out. We're saying we're opposing the bill as introduced for these reasons, and, you know, if it's.
I don't agree with all of those reasons, but I do agree with the reasons in it that could really threaten the work we've done for inclusionary housing. It could threaten some of the stuff we've done for, pardon?
Yeah, inclusionary housing.
I do worry about that, and I do worry a little bit about some of the current below-market, just naturally occurring rental properties that we have, especially in northeast Littleton. I am a little concerned, and since those are on the corridors, that those could be eaten up. And we don't have any safety plate in place, and if this bill then takes away our ability to do that, I am concerned about that. But it sounds like. Yeah, like bought out, bought out, redeveloped for market rates, yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars that's bought and then turned into six.
And there is some.
Yeah.
Right, and there is some very attractive multifamily units that have really prime property that I think could happen to that. And so I do worry about the displacement. I think there are amendments that are addressing that, and then I want to be able to see where those lay. And I don't think downright opposing it will be effective for us.
I I have a question for Ray. Do you, what is your hard feeling on this, what are our feeling on this? Uh, as far as, is this in Littleton's best interests?
In five words or less.
My, my best interest, I'm only whatever city council wants me to do. I, I'm just, I understand kind of the policy things just from a home rule. I mean, this is a breathtaking usurpation of home rule, local land use control. Whether it's warranted for whatever reasons, okay, but from just a legal perspective, I would, I would never be in support of this, just fundamentally, regardless of what they want to do. You know, how pretty this was or ugly it was, whatever. That's just me as a city attorney, a municipal attorney conveying that level of authority to, you know, the state government from a top-down approach to tell us what we should and shouldn't be doing. I I would, just from the legal standpoint, I would never support it, but you all tell me, you're my bosses, if you want me to support it, I'm gonna say this is the greatest idea ever.
So back to my point with, I think the the timeline, you know, we don't have time to wait to see what those amendments are. And so I think there's support to draft a resolution in opposition of the introduced bill and to with the with the rationale that we, you know, the various rationales of the inequity. And to, with the, with the rationale that we, you know, the various rationales of the inequity, the, the preemption of, of local control, various things that we all, all said that you can, you know, other cities have also identified. We could see if amendments are, you know, introduced before then, before next Tuesday. And then, or we can also take a new position after, you know, if we take this position, let's say next Tuesday, the bill changes drastically, we could take a new position at the, uh, you know, two weeks later. But I don't think sitting here and waiting to, uh.
I think with the months left of thirty amendments, it's gonna have a real, it has a tough role.
It's gonna have a real.
A lot.
Yeah.
So does it, do you, am I capturing?
Jim's looking.
I, I agree. I'm with you.
I think I'm hearing, um, you know, that we would draft the bill, I'm just trying to read.
Resolution.
Resolution, uh, opposing the bill as introduced for reasons that I heard threatening the work that we've done over the last few, few years, jeopardizing the, the units that are online for, for Littleton, lack of affordability protections in the bill, uh, preemption of, of local control to create the best solutions for Littleton and the, uh, inequity among the, uh, county communities, I mean, the cities. And I think we'd also incorporate some of probably the, this, um, evolving standard language that I know, uh, CML's drafted. Uh, we would capture these, these concepts as they came out of this conversation.
Don't you feel like the, they're kinda coming at it in a good, like in a good place, right? You don't think that's, but that.
Who's coming out of a good place?
The state. I mean, they're looking at the housing crisis that we have in the state of Colorado, most on the front range. And so this piecemealing it together, you know, piecemealing it along the front range, hasn't really worked.
That's exactly what they're proposing is to piecemeal the solution along the front range. I mean, it, it was amazing to see, you know, we had, I mean, resort communities, small communities, large communities all oppose it for, for, for a variety of reasons. I mean, we've had, I mean, there, I mean, I think, you know, all of us in some way, maybe not Steve, but all of us or you oppose it in some, there's some reason, Gretchen, there's issues that Gretchen has with it. But, you know, I think there might be different issues that Pam has and Gretchen has that I have. Um, and so I think that's, you know.
But I think the ones that Jim mentioned, we're kind of in agreement on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
The, the, those are the ones.
That's Steve.
A, a majority of council is.
But I think a lot of mine are gonna be addressed in the amendments that are proposed.
They may or may not.
And I think some of mine are too.
I don't think so.
Why does it have to be a resolution that says we oppose this? Why can't it be a, we, we're concerned about the.
It doesn't have to be.
Exactly. That's why.
But I'm saying, I think there's.
To abstain.
This is a big deal.
Yeah.
There's a majority of council that wants to oppose it, is what I'm saying.
I mean, the bill's gonna go forward whether the city will take a position or not.
They don't care what Littleton must say.
But it, it, it helps. It helps. How? Tell me that. How does it help?
If you are a legislature and you know that the majority of the cities in your community, city councils who are representative of the citizens are against it, you have to kind of listen.
And they can say, well, what would improve, yeah, what, what can we do to make you want to support it?
Right. I, I, I don't know if I want to have all the cities in my district, um, at odds with me over this kind of an issue. I mean, that's, that's what I, I mean, even, uh, Santan came up with a, a full page ad. Did you see that in the? Signed by all of their council people.
It's a big problem.
So we're back to, I mean, I.
I support your recommendation.
At this point, that's the direction.
I support it with the changes that you suggest.
Good direction.
You don't have to support the resolution.
Yeah, draft it. That's where's consensus and, sure.
And we can see where, what happens with the bill.
Yeah, if it makes it. Not much time.
More in the next week.
You never know, they might.
By the end of this week.
They may pull it.
But just given the timing with this direction, we would prepare the resolution and put this on your, your agenda for next week, for the action for next week.
Yeah.
Okay. What?
Never mind. Sorry.
All right, well, thank you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, uh, so city manager, have any updated report?
I do have one, um, pursuant to councils, uh, legislative rules. Um, I've heard from two council members, I think in this case it's fair to mention, it's, um, it's Mayor Schlatter and Councilman Millam. And some interest in having a council, a study session about council compensation. So again, per the rules, I want to think, you know, Mayor asked that I bring this to, you know, to just check in to see if the council is interested, if a majority of councils, uh, would like to have a, a study session about that. It's probably appropriate for, uh, Mayor or, or Kelly to just, you know, have a moment to speak to your, your interests. But that's, I did wanna raise that for you.
Yeah, it's been, what, eight, I think eight years since council looked at council compensation. I know lots of other municipalities have done that more recently and I know I've talked to.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we're having a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
It's about time.
We'll do it. We've started on the data, so we'll probably get that on soon too.
Okay, city attorney?
I just wanted to talk about two one three a little bit longer.